Good evening, welcome to the Milton Planning Board, meeting of October 22nd, 2015. My name is Emily Ennis, I'm the Chair, I'll ask the other members to introduce themselves.
Alex Whiteside, a member.
William Clark, Planning Director.
Julia Gettman-Clark.
Tim Serwinski, Assistant Town Planner.
Frank Burris, a member.
Cheryl Tagheas, a member.
We're just waiting on one other member who's running a little bit late, Mike Kelly. Let me run through the items for today. We have approval of past minutes, which we are going to be doing on Monday before town meeting, so our next meeting will be at 7:00. Next Monday, October 26th, and then town meeting starts at 7:30. The other item on our agenda for that will be to do the final vote, accepting the warrant committee's recommendations before we go into town meeting. Other than that, our next meeting would be November 12th, I understand there's at least one conflict, so we'll be discussing that at a later point in this meeting, because we also have to discuss the fact that currently we're scheduled for Thanksgiving and Christmas Eve, so keep that in mind. Citizen Speak is the next item on our agenda, yes?
Quickly, could the... Do you have a plan or are they... Did you plan to send out the batch minutes? Did you approve the email?
I believe there's a plan for the batch minutes to go out, is that... You had...
Julia, would you send that email you sent me to everyone?
I sent them to you.
You sent them to me, did you, but...
I didn't send them to everybody, I thought you'd look at them first.
Right, but you sent one to Alex.
You sent me all the unapproved minutes.
And the ones, the one I had didn't have the June minutes.
So send...
So why don't you send Alex to have the June minutes?
No.
Okay.
I forwarded them out to you.
Oh, okay, all right, all right, so then everybody should get that for Monday, make sure you look at it, because we'd like to pick them up. So Citizen Speak, you're very welcome, Citizen Speak will be the next item on the agenda. We have one public hearing for tonight, that is the definitive subdivision plan for 33 to 41 Pleasant Street, that will start at 7:15, if you're wanting to comment on that, please hold your comments for that public hearing, not for the Citizen Speak. The other items on our agenda are the continued discussion and deliberation of conditions by the Planning Board for Thayer Nursery, that's a special permit and site plan approval. The Planning Board also has for discussion two zoning articles, it says for October town meeting, but these are really, oh, sorry, those are the zoning articles for October town meeting, the colon in there is wrong. We're also going to potentially be talking about non-conforming buildings or lots or both, that was a question that came up on that particular bylaw, and then the general bylaw for noise, so, and then any other business after that. So as it's not, let's do Citizen Speak first, and then if we have any time remaining, we will go forward with a report from the Planning Director. Do we have any citizens who wish to speak? Yes, sir, please come forward.
My name is Phil Joehanning, I live in part of Dr. Drive in Milton. My comments regarding what I perceive to be inconsistencies in the way the public hearings were conducted, let's say for 333 Brushhill Road, where the public hearing was closed, yet the board continued to hear from members of the public. And I thought, I didn't understand that, and I thought it was inconsistent and maybe potentially unfair to others who might be in the same situation. Additionally, I wanted to mention peer review. I noted that in 333 Brushhill Road, peer review was provided to the abudders by the applicant, and I was curious about why peer review wouldn't be a common practice, why the applicant would typically not provide peer review. I think it would be really important to be consistent and fair to all abudders and to all applicants, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, I will answer you in a minute, Mr. Joehanning, I just want to make sure, is there anybody else who wishes to speak for Citizen Speak? All right, so in that case, Mr. Joehanning, your first question on the inconsistencies, as you call them, for the, between 333 Brushhill Road, and I'm assuming you're referring to Thayer's, the other one, 333 Brushhill Road is actually not the same type of application as some of the others received, it is a site plan approval, and in the period between when the board had closed its public hearing, and when we were going to vote on our, on the draft site plan approval, if you remember, Alex was working on the draft, and we had a meeting in between, in which a number of residents came forward to Citizen Speak, and they said, "We didn't know this was happening until suddenly somebody arrived on our property, and on what we believed to be the town's property, and started construction." And these are people who had not had the chance to speak in front of the person who had made the application, and to listen to that. So we had them do a special citizen speak right before our deliberation, so they would have a chance to make their complaints known to the person who had started that, started work actually in advance of us actually granting a site plan approval. The other major public hearing that we've been having recently has of course been Thayer Nursery, which is a site plan approval and special permit, and that has been actually a series of two public hearings, one which started roughly this time, a little bit later last year, I don't remember the exact date, and one ended in March when we had the solar panels fall off the roof of Town Hall, and then a second public hearing started up and has continued until just a few weeks ago. At that, the public and the abudders have had every opportunity to speak in front of the applicant and in front of the board and give their points. So in those two respects, one did not have the ability to do that, because they didn't actually know what was going on until somebody showed up and said, you know, started work, and in the other, everybody has had the opportunity to speak. So really, it was granting an unusual circumstance for the public to be able to be heard on 333 Brushhill Road. On the second, on the peer review, I note that Mr. Joehanning mentioned that a peer review was provided to abudders at 333 Brushhill Road. I just want to clarify that any reviews that are done, whether it's by the town engineer or by a peer review, are provided to the Planning Board. The purpose of a public hearing for any of these, whether it's site plan approval, or special permit, or scenic road, the purpose of the public hearing is for the Planning Board to gather all information, including information from members of the public, which include abudders, as well as from the applicant and any peer reviews. In some circumstances, we have requested a peer review be done, in some circumstances, we've had the town engineer do the peer review, whether or not we have a peer review has often depended on how busy the town engineer is, and so in certain circumstances, we requested an outside peer review, because town engineer simply doesn't have the capacity to do it. So those are my two answers on that. I see we have about five more minutes before the public hearing starts. Bill, would you like to give a quick report as to what you've been up to, I don't think we've had a report recently.
This board has actually approved a couple of definitive subdivisions in the short past. One was Mary Webb's Delane, the other was Beechwood. I've been going through the decisions, and now have to go back and deal with the developers on the issues that are outstanding within the decisions. Some of it goes back to the Planning Board, some of it goes back to the Engineering Department. I've had the discussion with the engineers in town, and we now have to go back and see if we can get these things rectified before winter sets in. The special permit for Woodmere, the St. Pius Site, I've been going through the construction plans with their project engineer, went through the clearing, the trees, the tree plans, the drainage plans, the engineering plans for the water and sewer connections to the street, been meeting with them several times out there, wanted to look at the specific trees that have been saved, the specific trees that they tried to save, but they lost one, it was already rotted out. Been going through the issue of the...
Was there a leaning tree that they, they stacked a lot of wood up against, so that it was, it was going at a 45-degree angle, was that the way it was going to be preserved?
It is, it was already leaning, and they did remove those things the next day. They're not up against it, and there is an orange fence around those two trees.
And did they pull it to an upright position again?
Can't do that, they can't do that, but it's an oak tree and it will...
Maybe they're going to have to replace it.
They may have to in time. They did lose one of the big oak trees that they thought they were going to save, but when they went to do pruning on it, when they went in and grabbed the tree, the top of it fell off, so it came down. The Dupree House, the mansion that's on site, when they bought the property, they had just taken out the oil tank, there has been an oil spill under the underground tank, so before they get too far with new construction sites, they're making sure they remove all of the fill up around where that tank is. That should take about another week. They have an LSP on site every day to figure out how far, how deep, next steps. They've been in touch with DEP every day with it. The roadway is pretty much, almost completely laid out, packed gravel-wise. Two of the foundation holes that dug, the drainage holes are dug, they'll be filing for all of those permits early to mid next week. The site itself is a giant bowl, so anything that happens, everything stays inside, so it's a nice place to have to work if you're worried about erosion. The trees have been taken down according to the plan, and move on to the 333 Brushhill, which had the same issue with trees. The construction management review, I was out there with the developer, and his site person marking trees, continually looking at, you know, better ways to save other trees. They already started some of their ground clearing, they're getting ready to put in their drainage system. They've laid out where the road goes, and they are trying to find the optimum way to put the utilities in. Dealing with the East Milton Parking, meeting with the Chamber of Commerce, meeting with Mass Highway, meeting with Howes, Stein, Hudson, that's an ongoing process. Governor Stoughton Property, the, I met with the people from Polte, trying to get them to move along on their application to this board, and they are, they hired a new engineer because of the complexities that the site offers. That engineer has been out every day last week, and I know that he's been out Monday and Tuesday of this week, on site, doing more measuring, shooting lines and doing the rest, so they're shooting for November to file an application with this board.
They should be encouraged to hire a landscape architect.
They did.
Okay, good.
And then I've been doing the stuff for Eul and Rink, trying to get the 25-year lease for this select one.
Sounds fairly promising. Thank you very much. And that brings us to 7:15, so we are going to start the public hearing on the definitive subdivision plan for 33 to 41 Pleasant Street, going to read the rules for the public hearing. So we're going to have, because this is the opening, we're going to have an introduction from staff, in this case, Tim. The applicant will make a presentation, we've heard it before, but not in this, as far as an initial presentation, but not as part of this public hearing. I'll allow questions from board members at that point, I'll take any testimony from members of the public, and then we'll identify outstanding items for the next meeting. When we get to the point where we take testimony from members of the public, I will read the rules for that. So, Tim, do you want to give us a quick synopsis?
Sure. Bill and myself conducted a technical review on documents provided by the applicant, a lot of just sort of housekeeping-type things for cleaning up the plans and getting them ready, which you should all have planned, I've got a big copy over here for when we eventually get started, you can take a look at that. A few of the things that are, I don't want to say outstanding, but I would flag for your consideration is the issue with Lot 9 and the frontage for that, or the potential frontage for that. There's a, there was a frontage question on Lot 4 regarding the zoning bylaws definition of frontage, 80% of 75%, so that's something to take a look at. And I would just, there's been, the applicant's been before the Conservation Commission regarding a utility easement through the 100-foot buffer of the Vernal Pool towards the rear of the site, and also has been in contact with the Milton Historic Commission regarding the two existing houses on the site. I don't want to put words in the applicant's mouth, but, you know, they can, they can let you know about that. It just came in today, you should all have in your, in front of you, a memo from the town engineer, who had a chance to look at these and provide some initial comments. Unless Bill has anything else.
Bill, anything else? All right. In that case, welcome.
Good day. My name is Paul Sullivan, Smith Road, Milton, I'm here with the applicant.
Rob Celeberty.
Yeah. Regarding, I'll just quickly go over the Milton Historic Commission, I just heard from Steve O'Donnell and on the second house, 33 Pleasant Street, it's all set, they're not seeking to preserve either one of the homes.
Okay.
So that's behind us. Regarding the easement and the conservation, they prepared to issue an order condition, they voted on a site walk to approve it, and so that's moving forward. Back to the subdivision itself and the site, it's a combination of two properties, 33 and 41 Pleasant Street, it's approximately 3.5 acres, it has 258 feet of frontage on Pleasant Street between Reed Steel Road and Randolph Avenue. This proposed subdivision road is approximately 375 feet, and it ends in a cul-de-sac. The developer intends to remove the two existing properties, and there's been some soil tests done in the roadway area, and they hit ledge at the cul-de-sac, probably nine to 10 feet down, and at the midpoint of the road, it was equally similar depth, so we don't anticipate too much ledge removal in the site other than Lot 4, which clearly has ledge on that lot, and potentially Lot 9 or 2, I should say. The zoning for the property is, it's a mix of Resident B, which is, requires 20,000 square feet land area and 100 feet of frontage, and the front section of the development is Residence C, which requires 7,500 square feet and 75 feet of frontage. All these lots will meet zoning. There is a list of waivers that were on the plans, the applicant's seeking, the first one is 6.1.10, which, under the subdivision rules and regs, a 50-foot right-of-way is required, and the applicant proposes to build a 40-foot right-of-way. The reason for that is, most of the homes, including Pleasant Street that it intersects, have 40-foot right-of-ways, we thought it was appropriate for the area. He's proposed to only install one sidewalk in the subdivision versus the requirement of two. It's a pretty short roadway, and we didn't think it was really necessary to have two sidewalks in it. In the rules and regs in Appendix A, it shows a 28-foot width for pavement, the applicant's proposing 22 feet of width, again, considering the length of the road and the number of homes, the engineer thought that would be adequate. And then finally, on the easement, the town requires a 20-foot width for utility easements, we only proposed 15 feet because of, the best area to place the easement was on the edge, the outer edge of the 100-foot no disturbs area, the Vernal Pool, so we were trying to eliminate the, how much area got disturbed, but we think it's still adequate for sewer and water to pass through it. The utilities for the subdivision would be town sewer and water, access from Pleasant Street right in front of the subdivision. The sewer system would be a gravity system with an eight-inch main, and require through new, three new sewer manholes, going to provide an eight-inch water main that's going to go through the property, up the roadway, through the easement, up to the town property in the rear that's called 51 Quarry Lane. And then propose to do underground electric, that will be supplied by Eversource, and also, National Grid has a gas main in Pleasant Street, and we intend to extend that into the development. The applicant proposes a private way for the subdivision, therefore, he will set up a homeowners association to manage and maintain the common areas. Primarily, it'll be snow removal. We will submit a draft to that homeowners association, to the Planning Board. We discussed earlier utility easement for the town, for the, provide water up to the town access road for potential looping over to Quarry Lane. And regarding Lot 9, there was a title review of the 33-foot right-of-way that runs through the horse farm out to Randolph Avenue, and according to that research, Matthew Gaines and also some title work that were prepared by Kablak and Associates, it says that the property at 41 Pleasant Street has rights of access and right to improve the existing right-of-way. So the applicant is proposing to pave 100 feet in front of Lot 9 at an 18-foot width to provide proper frontage for that Lot 9. Sewer and water is being brought to that lot through the easement that is proposed. And then regarding the size of the lots in the neighborhood, there were some questions during preliminary hearings about these lot sizes, and as you can see, they're, they're pretty common in the area, pretty common to the abutting and the surrounding streets, and well within keeping of the neighborhood. And then we did a, an analysis of lot coverage growth, floor area and open space based on Lot Number 1, and as you can see, it meets all the requirements. There was a question regarding the elevations of the homes at Lot 1 and Lot 8, and the garages will be on the inner side of the development, and the ends of those proposed homes will have similar architectural detail as the front of the homes. And then the applicant has proposed to plant significant amount of trees, evergreen trees, plantings along Pleasant Street and along the abutting homes on the right and left side of the development, and also street trees along the way. And then we were asked to provide a construction timeline, obviously it depends on when the development is approved, but at this point in time, we anticipate over the winter, maybe removal of the two existing homes, installation of erosion control system, cut and cap the utilities for those, the two existing homes, and remove some trees and stump the roadway, and rough layout the roadway, and remove any ledge as necessary. The intent of the, the applicant is to remove ledge through chipping, hammering versus drilling and blasting. And at this time, we project that most of the roadwork will be done during the spring and summer of 2016, and the project would be completed sometime in 2017.
All right. In that case, questions from members of the board? Alex?
How wide is Pleasant Street?
Pavement or right-of-way?
Pavement.
I haven't measured it, I would guess it's 24 to 28 feet, in that range.
This street that you propose to be 22 feet wide is going to have to provide parking or feed houses, because there'll only be a limited amount of space in the driveways. 22 feet is, is not adequate, in my, my view. I don't, I think that the idea of putting up four-to-six-foot spruce trees is not a good plan, I think that deciduous trees of a greater magnitude would be in order, and would be significantly more attractive. Getting to your Lot 9, this is not, this is, this is not a proper, a proper lot to be shown on a subdivision plan, because what you're basically trying to do here is create an approval-not-required lot on an existing way. And an approval-not-required means that subdivision approval is not required, and seeking subdivision approval for an approval-not-required lot is the wrong way to go. If you seek subdivision approval, you've got to show the street you're going to construct on that 35-foot passageway, and it has to be shown from Randolph Avenue, and it has to meet, it will be a subdivision road, and you're going to be asking a waiver of the 50-foot right-of-way to construct a street, and presumably you could ask for an 18-foot pavement width, depending on how many other houses use it further down the line, you'd have to put utilities in it. But, you haven't shown that. If you want to do an A&R plan, we have to determine that this way was in existence on February 10th, 1938, and we have to determine that it currently has sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of the land. And I don't think that this way is even constructed.
No, it's paved, about half of it's paved, maybe a little bit more than that.
Is it paved in front of this lot?
No, it's not paved, we proposed to pave it.
And it exists in front of this lot, on the ground?
No, we haven't paved it yet.
If it doesn't exist, how can you say it exists in 1938?
What is the condition of the...
Well, the road could have been, it was created prior to 1938, I haven't researched it yet, but I would guess it was, yes.
Well, in any event, I would suggest this to you, if you want to do a subdivision, you have to have frontage on a subdivision street, and this passageway is not a subdivision street, you've got to basically have another subdivision, at least you, by combining it into one big subdivision with two streets, you avoid the issue of a one-lot subdivision. So that would be to your advantage, but it's going to, you know, constructing a street in there is going to, is going to cost some dough. But in any event, the plan as it's shown doesn't have anything about construction of a street, and therefore, Lot 9 has no frontage. And if you were to proceed with this plan, you would have to say, not a buildable lot with respect to Lot 9. with respect to Lot 9.
Can I just go back to one thing you said at the beginning? Regarding the parking?
Yeah.
These, all these homes are going to have two-car garages with sufficient space of parking additional cars in the driveway, a minimum of that. And some of them will have double-decked lot driveways where you'd be able to stack four cars, so.
I, you know, maybe. I think that each of these homes will probably have at least three cars. And I, you see, no reason that Pleasant Street has to be overburdened with parking for a new development that has inadequate parking of its own. So I'm, you know, I would want to measure Pleasant Street to see how wide it is. And I, I think that this street should be the same width. That's what I think because...
Yeah, we could check the width of it.
And I'd like to know how wide the right-of-way on Quarry Lane is.
It's 40 feet.
It's 40 feet, is the, and so...
Almost every street in that area is 40.
The only street would be Edge Hill, which, or Pleasant Street, as it gets into the street.
As it goes into Reed still, when it changes to Reed still, I'd say that right-of-way is probably 50.
50 or 60.
Yeah, that's pretty wide.
But they had a trolley car there, so that impacts the width. In any event, I'm inclined to, I'm inclined to go for the waiver. If we get better trees, we get assurances on the appearance of these, the sides of these houses as they face the street because that's going to be extremely important, that the appearance to Pleasant Street is an attractive one. And driveways opening onto the new road, and that's...
Yeah, we could show the driveways and the length of the driveways, add that to the plan so you could see that.
But I mean, as I say, the, the standard for a waiver is that you, it's going to, you know, be basically a benefit to the public. So I think that these issues that I, I suggest would benefit the public. And other members of the board may have other, other suggestions.
Do other members of the board have other suggestions or questions?
I have a question.
Brian first, then Cheryl.
I noted on the engineer's report, I don't know if you've had a chance to see this.
Just, it's the first time I've seen it.
They're referencing that the utilities, and it needs to be 20 feet. So be looking for your, your feedback on that, noting that they have to have a 10-foot separation. I, I'm not, I don't have the same concern necessarily about the parking on the roadway. What I, what I would suggest is, the engineer's report also suggests that we would consider, that we should consider making this a public way instead of a condo association way. If we were to do that, I would want to see more conformance with the, the proper widths of the roadway. I'd be looking more for a 24-foot roadway or a 28-foot roadway if we're going to have to take this over as a town road. And I did have one last question, just as a, as a suggestion. If this does remain a homeowners association road, I don't think a bus will go down it. I'm not sure if a bus will go down it in any case. So if the, assuming that most of these homes will probably have children, I wonder about putting some sort of community bus or street, street bus stop at the end of the road. You know, that was proposed for a few of the proposals we've seen recently. You know, it was proposed at the former Boyle Estate on Brushell Road. So just a consideration and a suggestion. That's all from me.
Cheryl?
Yeah, on the, Alex, your comment about the width of the street relative to parking, where we don't have overnight parking on the street, are you assuming because it's a private roadway that the overnight parking is allowed then on the street?
I'm thinking of when someone wants to have a few friends over and they park on the street, the road has to be sufficient to handle that because otherwise, they're going to park on Pleasant Street. And...
So it's not necessarily the, the truck per house?
It's not the overnight, it's the day-to-day, normal use, you know, when they...
Tree lawn.
Well, a tree lawn, yeah.
Parking on the tree lawn, but is there?
Oh, I was thinking of the, the landscape services coming in and parking their trucks.
Can I get first? I do know that the engineering department just sent this over late this afternoon. So I know that Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Sullivan have not seen this at this point. So this is the first time they've seen it. So they didn't, they weren't prepared to address these particular issues. I think the issues in here about the bond for the construction of the road, I think the issue of the acceptance of the final product as a town road, if we wind up plowing it, we don't want it falling apart. If the homeowner association, something happens to wit and they don't take care of the road, it isn't the homeowner association and it isn't the developer that they're going back after. It's engineer, it's DPW and engineering that they're calling and saying, "But my street is a mess." They want to make sure that they're either protected by it or they want to make sure it's built to the right standards.
Would that include a snow pileup place? Rather than push it all into Pleasant Street?
Uh-huh. I mean, that, that goes back to the issue of where do you stack it on the cul-de-sac?
Right, snow storage.
I did, I did look at it with engineering and did ask the question, couldn't should the, the bulb end be an island that could then take and hold a lot of that snow? Low vegetation, but have snow for the pileup there?
We could pile it up in front of Lot 4, too. There's plenty of space there. You know, the 22-foot width means we'd have less snow on the road, too.
But that means you're dumping snow from a, from the rest of the street onto somebody's private property, which becomes another issue.
No, the right-of-way, the right-of-way's 55 feet across, well, it's 100 feet across, so it's only going to be paved, you know, a little less than that, so there'd be some room there.
Other questions? Mike, did you have anything?
Can I just direct a question to Bill? On the plowing, if the town, if the HOA does not maintain the road, does not plow the road, is there a requirement due to fire for the town to maintain and plow it? Or is it just, we do it because we do it?
We plow an awful lot of private roads in town that we shouldn't be. But that is a issue that gets brought up about every third year by the selectmen, and it's, when it does come up, it's a, it's a nasty fight. I know DPW is looking at it, and they would prefer to have it fall under their Chapter 90 issue, count the road, and be done with it. It wasn't the narrowing of the road, but it's the construction and to make sure that the base of it comes up to be, meet the standards, that the drainage meets the standards. And having a bond there that says that it's built to those standards. I know they put in a few other things, like they would like to have stamped as-bills that can be filed with the registry upon completion. They want final subdivision as-bills. One of the other things that we talked about were real lot line on the major corners, putting in stakes, whether it's an iron pipe, just on the major corners.
Can you talk to us a little bit about Lot 4 and the issues with frontage on Lot 4? You brought it up, Tim, but it wasn't addressed at the beginning.
So the definition of frontage in, in the bylaw, and you'll have to correct me if I, if I mix this up. Frontage has to be, it has to, 80% of the required frontage has to extend in a parallel fashion into this, into the lot, 75% of the required frontage. So basically, you have to be able to draw an 80-foot line from the, the frontage and go into the site 75 feet.
Okay.
And that's straight-line frontage on a curved roadway, which, you know, the, the shape of Lot 4 kind of is, is odd in that way. And when, when, when the applicant sent in the, the sort of the, the final plans for the, for the public hearing, it's sort of, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure what they're doing with Lot 4. And so I would, I'd like to hear a little bit about that.
Well, what's the problem with Lot 4? I mean, they, they have the, they have 114.97 feet of frontage from lot line to lot line. And then they show the 75 feet, and then if you draw a parallel line to the, to the frontage line, I think that that should do it, shouldn't it? I mean, that's the 75, that, that's not going to be, you're, you're going to be able to get 75% of the distance in.
I mean, this could just be me, me not quite understanding exactly how, how the, how the definition operates. But I, I interpret it as where straight-line frontage from where the two sidelines of the lot hit the frontage, that's your straight-line frontage. And that's got to go, 80 feet of that has to go 75 feet into the lot. Which the way, the, the way that, that parallel line where those sidelines hit, just because it's kind of, that lot kind of sneaks around, you know, the, the, the spirit of, of the definition is there in this lot. I mean, it's not a, it's not a pork chop or a rat tail or whatever lot that we're trying to talk about. I mean, it's got, it's got frontage, but it's not kind of meeting the definition. Now, if, if, you know, the lines that they're drawing here, I mean, if that, if that works, I mean, that's...
They, they need 80 feet, right? They need 80 feet paralleling, 75 feet in, and then 80 feet they need paralleling the frontage line.
Right.
So the question is, and, and we've had it before where we've got these, these trapezoidal or parallelograms that, that are not rectangles, but they, they, they angle in. And it's, if you angle in, I mean, if you take a, if you go 75 feet in from the, the common lot line with Lot 5, and go 75 feet paralleling the 75-foot line that's already there, then there's plenty of room to do that. Then you get, you actually get a, get a rectangle.
Right.
So that does it, doesn't it?
Well, I mean, it, it, it does, it does it in, in the spirit of it, but the letter of it says, where, where the sidelines of the lot meet the frontage, the line between those is your straight-line frontage.
Right. Which is the 114 feet. And then you, you show the 75 feet going in, and then you do a parallel line into Lot 4.
But you couldn't use the right-of-way.
Yeah, it's over the, it's over the, the cul-de-sac part.
One end of your line ends up out of the lot.
And while we're looking at this, just so people know, we're looking at Section 1 definitions of the zoning by law.
All right, I agree with you, Tim. This is brilliant.
Right, so, so, and I mean, and like I said, it's, it's...
They don't have frontage.
It's a frustrating thing because you look at this lot, and like, clearly, there's 70, there, you know...
If you did this, Tim, if you parallel, it doesn't work.
Right.
If you go...
Exactly. If you jog it and you tilt it, like, it's fine, but, so I mean, like, you know, the, the sideline of this lot, and I'm sorry for the camera, but I mean, you know, the sideline for the lot has to hit this part of the cul-de-sac. And if it does that and it goes in, you're all set. The way it is now, I mean, like I said, the, the spirit of, of, of the definition is there.
What does it, what does it say where, it's under the definition of frontage, right?
Yes, it's page one, Section 1 definitions, number seven.
At least 80% of the required frontage, measured parallel to the aforementioned straight line, must be maintained without interruption for at least 75% of the required frontage.
It doesn't say that you can't use the road, that I could say.
Well, but that's not part of the lot. The road is not part of the lot.
The road is the road, to be, you know, simplistic.
Is it someplace, it, it doesn't bring up the road in that definition?
No, but you're talking about the frontage of the lot. The road can't be the lot. It's either road or lot.
The road, that doesn't count. I, I mean, I was, I was, I was with you for a while, Paul, but now I've pointed out that the road is there.
There you go.
This is a, this is a...
Now, if you...
This is messing up the building envelopes, is what it's doing.
If you, if you cut it off, and this, you'll have to look at how much square feet have, you have here, so that the lot line for 4 actually starts here. You've got your cul-de-sac, maybe this is an unbuildable lot. Does that then fix the frontage? I think it does. So you need to look at how much land you're, so that bit where 4...
It's made 100 feet.
Where 4 meets Lot 3, and then you've got that swoop around for the cul-de-sac, if that becomes an unbuildable lot...
Could be your snow storage.
That could be your snow storage, exactly. So that Lot 4 actually starts much closer to the ending curve of the cul-de-sac, then I think you get your frontage that way. Have a look at the measurements of that.
It would need 100 feet.
You'd need 100 feet, so now you have to look at that.
How you're going to get that, you're going to have to move into Lot 5.
Well, but Lot, Lot 5 has, has some room, and Lot 9 has some.
I understand that.
Yeah, but what...
But that's what you've got to do because of...
You have to play with your geometry a little bit. That's what they're going to have to do, yeah.
I mean, it isn't an easy fix.
No, it's not an easy fix. But I think you start by not having that first part be Lot 4. I think you make that your unbuildable lot and your snow storage.
I think that that's, I think that's probably an excellent idea.
Yeah.
The road is 100 feet, though, and if you look at the right-of-way, you're only going to get 100 on Lot 4. It's, it, it looks like it would fit if you cut that piece off and made it, either attach it to Lot 3 or...
You still have a big piece of roadway in the middle of it.
Well, it depends on how far into you cut, you cut the lot. I mean, you can cut it back here, but then you still need, you're right, Alex, you still need the 100 feet. I think you're going to have to look at how you shift that geometry around.
Of course, you know, the frontage we know on, on a, we go from the layout.
Yeah.
We go in from the layout, not from the pavement.
Right, exactly. So you might be able to do it. The other thing is, I mean, they have room on Lot 5. Lot 9 has plenty of square footage.
They're going to have to...
So they have room to move the boundaries of 4, 5, and 9 around.
It's simply, I mean, they've got a, they're going to have to...
Yeah.
Go back to the drawing board.
I think you, I think your solution solves it, as long as he doesn't lose 5,000, losing the other piece of lot.
Right.
Right, exactly.
What's the solution?
Well, just put, just say the 100-foot frontage is right here.
That's not, that's not 100 feet.
It is 100.
You can't do the curve for the 100 feet, it has to be straight line.
Straight, it is straight.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, you can do it.
You can do it, right there, right?
Got the room.
Now, if you move back 75 feet, you still have...
Yes, barely, but you've got the room.
More than 80% of it.
It has to be parallel to the frontage line.
It is. Yes, give me, give me this. This is your frontage line. That's your frontage line, okay? That's 100 feet.
Yeah, but you're using the roadway still.
No, no, no.
You're going parallel to the roadway.
That's fine. But could you do, could you do your 80 feet?
Why isn't it fine already? Because what Tim said is when you move back 75 feet, you have to have at least 80% of that frontage, and you have to be on the lot. If you're over here and you move back 75 feet and you're parallel, you're no longer on the lot. You're off the lot.
You can go down there, though.
Yes.
No, but you're not parallel with this frontage here. This is the frontage, you've got to stay parallel.
Being parallel, this is parallel down here.
Yeah, but it's, no.
You've got a, you've got a parallelogram.
I think what they mean by parallel is like this.
We've done this before. It isn't, you don't need a rectangle.
You need a square.
You don't need a rectangle. You don't need a square.
Okay, then it does work.
It does work. But you're starting to lose a lot of, you're starting to lose a lot of acreage, so it's going to be the other challenge.
And then we'll quit up this...
But they've got, but they've got Lot 9, they've got 32,000, so...
Move back 75 feet like this.
You'd out of Lot 9.
Yeah, because Lot 5 has 21, so it's only got 1,000 of the move, yeah.
If you're using, if you're using part of the roadway, Mike, that's the problem.
You're all set then.
Not if you're using the roadway as part of your, as part of your setback area.
But can you use 20% of the roadway?
What?
Can you use 20% of the roadway?
25%. Remember, it has to go back 75%, so you get 25% of it.
Alex, if you're not using the roadway, you just said, "I don't have to move straight back, just parallel. Well, if I stay parallel, I can move over there."
Okay, go, you go up...
You're changing the envelope. Yeah, we're doing the same thing, I have to say.
It's changing the building envelope. What building envelope? I'm in the building envelope. I ain't changing no building envelope. Stay in parallel, I'm going seventy-five feet in, and I'm staying parallel?
Yeah, you won't have to go back.
No, I think what you're saying is the setback line changes, and, but I still think it works. I mean, looking back at it, you're set...
I do, I just think that it, but it changes it, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, it does change it, but it doesn't make it unworkable. It doesn't make it unworkable.
And Lot Four has twenty-five thousand as it is, so it can afford to lose some.
It has some, I think you're just going to have to cheat a little bit.
Yeah, well, you're going to have to take some from Lot Nine and shift that line around a little bit, but I think you'd be fine. So, Paul, go and make that work.
Sure.
I think is what the board is saying, too.
And design a street in from the, but you're going to need a waiver, because there's a five-hundred-foot rule on a street. If you were to try and do a subdivision street, there's a five-hundred-foot rule, so you would not only need a waiver for the width of the right-of-way, but for the length of the street that you'd be proposing.
Any more questions from board members? Otherwise, I'll open it up to the public. Yes.
Do, does the town have other streets that serve this quantity of homes that are at this right-of-way and paved roadway width? Do we know?
Did you just ask how many, are there other homes on that thirty-three-foot road?
No, I mean, are there other examples in town where we have a roadway of this proposed width? I'm just...
Mary Repsah Lane is eighteen feet with four homes on it.
This is eight homes.
But this is eight homes on twenty-two feet, right?
I think it's twenty-six feet at Stone Hill Lane, isn't it twenty-six?
That's why.
And that was, we fought for twenty-six there. And that is a similar, similar issue.
So, this would, so this is, there's not a precedent, really, is what I'm asking for this width, I guess, right? I just want to understand.
Same number of houses. Actually, Stone Hill has a few less houses.
It's twice as long the road.
It may be, but the number of houses served is significantly less.
That's five.
Five houses, okay. Anything else from board members? All right, if you two will step back, we're going to open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. I'm going to read the rules for that. Please wait to be recognized before speaking. Come to the table and give your name and address. Speak into the microphone. When you're done, please leave the table. All questions or comments must be directed to the chair. Speakers may not cross-examine applicant, board members or other speakers. The applicant will be asked to respond to questions at the end of the public input session, and then we'll move back to figure out what the next steps are. So, does anybody wish to speak? Yes, sir, please come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Greg Suzula, and I am in Abutter. I own 704 and 706 Randolph Ave. The property has five horses on it, and it has for a few years. There used to be up to fifty horses on the property, but when I took control of it, I opened it up to rescue horses and rescue animals, therapy animals. I don't charge anybody any money, it's all free. I pay for everything. I redesigned the farm so that the rescue horses would have large paddocks, and we only have five horses there. I don't know that we're ever going to get more than that. It depends on what animals are in trouble, and one of those horses is mine. It's a therapy horse. I suffer from an illness. It causes short-term memory loss, so I have some demands or requests that I'm willing to share the cause of, if the developer will work with me. Horses are a very fickle animal, especially rescue horses. They've been abused, so they're very easily spooked. Tonight, I heard the developer talk about blasting. That would lead to a horrific situation. I'm not here to oppose, or to delay, or to cause any issues with the developer. What I need them to do is communicate with me. So, I'm going to probably ask for things that nobody's ever asked for. One of them is going to be to communicate with me by email on a daily basis. If they are going to make noise, such as drilling or blasting, I will move my horses at my expense. I have a caretaker that volunteers her time to the rescue animals. We will move them to the barn, and we will lock the doors so that the horses are sheltered. However, if they are blasting, I will remove those horses, and by trailer, I will pay that expense. Hopefully, there's not a lot of blasting, because it's difficult to get some of these horses into the trailers, and it is traumatic for the horses. They've already been through enough, but I understand construction and development, so I will find a place for my, at least for the horses. I don't think that's unreasonable, and I think I want to continue to support the shelter that is proposed across the street, and any other developments that's there. I'm going to ask the town or any other development that's done pretty much the same situation. I wasn't properly notified for these meetings, but I'm not always around, so email will work. I did find out about the meeting. There was multiple meetings.
There was a pre-application, a series of pre-applications, but this is the first night of the actual formal application.
Oh, okay. All right.
You haven't missed.
Okay. I got a meeting notice...
We had the pre-ap, yeah.
That, when I signed for it, it had already, the meeting had already happened. It's not a problem, because I know that these...
I made sure that Greg was notified. I sent you two.
Yeah.
I sent you one at Randolph Ave, and I sent you one at Blue Hill Ave.
Right.
Because I wasn't sure which one you were going to get.
I'll get both of them, because...
I know.
The mail department knows that, and that's not an issue. I'm not complaining.
Right.
That's how you normally notify people. That's not good enough for me when it comes to blasting or noise. I've had issues with drilling and environmentals, and we did not have a good time up there. So, what did work out was letting me know so that I will get back to the developer on a daily basis, on an hourly basis. I just got this new fancy phone, and it has all my notes in it, but I'm not recording the meeting, so one, one thing I'm going to ask the developer is to, I don't know how to do this, but I would like a recording of every town meeting that goes on to develop that property, because I'm not going to be able to attend these meetings.
We, the town records them, so you can get that.
Okay, so he, if, I will pay for that, but I would like that on a DVD. Because of my short-term memory loss, I'm not going to remember this meeting tomorrow, unfortunately. It's the first time I've been out in probably a year, so that's the good news. The bad news is, I'm not going to remember any of you tomorrow. Well, that's the good news. Just in his case. Okay. But he can record that on DVD, I can't do that.
Oh, but you can get them all online.
Oh, 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 okay. Oh, I didn't know that. Oh, good. All right, well, maybe Mr. Clark has a way for me to just get them, and I'll just review them and take notes on them. This is the first night for my phone, so bear with me. One of the things that I would like, and this would be at cost to the developer, we built our paddocks on as close to the property line as we possibly could, because there's nice woods there, and I'm sure that nobody's ever going to develop that, although that didn't happen, and I wasn't able to buy it from Frank O'Neil, somebody else bought it. So, I would purchase that property if possible, but I'm not going to oppose development. The paddocks, I don't want to move the paddocks. I can work with the developer. I believe somebody from the board mentioned a border of trees or something like that. I'm not going to tell them what to purchase, but if they could put a border of like arborvitae, something, you're never going to stop all the noise, but what you are going to do is you're going to stop the visual from the horses. So, something like that, even if they purchased them, they installed them, I would purchase them after and have them install them on my property, because I'm going to want to have that border. They could also do something like install them on my property so that we have a border from the start. I'll work with them on that. If I have to pay for that, I will pay for that. The other thing I'm going to ask is that nobody goes near those horses, because they are rescue horses, and if they look like zoo animals, they're not. If you go near the horse, and they can go right up to the paddock, the horse swings its head, it will kill somebody. It will, it will certainly kill a small child, and I don't want any lawsuits up there. Any lawsuits. So, if, I will post signs, but I would want to educate the developer. I've done this in the past, it's been very successful. But I understand construction, and there's going to be delays, there's going to be changes. I need them to think of me first and let me know what the change is. I will get back to them immediately. They'll have my cell phone number, and they can text me, and I'm not going to hold them up a minute. I do not work. I am disabled, and I will work with them. Two years is not a long time for me. I've lived in this town since nineteen eighty, eighty-nine, and I've had no issues. It's been a wonderful experience for me. It has been. So, I don't think that's unreasonable. I would prefer to buy the property, but I know that's not going to happen. I know Mr. Sullivan has been very successful at his developments, and somehow they go through, so I'm just going to be smart and work with him instead of oppose him. I believe that's everything, so I would like to pretty much make this my last appearance. And I don't know if you can make it a requirement, but I would like it to be a requirement, and I would like them to do it out of the goodness of their heart for the rescue animals.
Thank you very much. As you know, normally, I let everybody ask their questions first, but in this case, Paul, do you have anything you'd like to tell us about how closely you're going to work with?
Sure, I just want to tell Greg that we're not going to blast at all up there.
Paul, can you grab the mic?
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, I just want to let Greg know that we're not going to do any blasting up there that we've already said...
Didn't they just say you were going to?
No, we're not, no, we're going to rule out any blasting.
Oh, okay.
We're going to do some chipping, but it's going to be on the lot that's furthest away from you. It's over here, there's some, some rock there, but other than that, the rest of the lots, I don't believe we're going to have any issues, and we have no problem keeping Greg informed of what's going on and, you know, avoiding, not letting anybody, engineers or anybody go on his property or disturb his horses.
I've had that issue before.
Right.
It was resolved.
Yep.
Just communication's all I need.
Sure, that's fine.
And I now have a cell phone, so...
Yep, we have no problem with that.
And planting trees, working with him to plant trees as a visual barrier?
Yeah, we could create a buffer for his property, sure.
Would you want to put that on my property or your property?
Maybe I could meet you out there, we could see where the lot line is and see what works better.
All right. I am, you have just enough room, but they have to be further, far enough back, because the horses will eat them.
Sure, yep, that's fine, we can work something out, whatever works better.
Yeah, but it's before the vernal pool, so it would be still on my property.
Yeah, it'd be outside the hundred-foot, not disturb areas.
And we would need your machine, and then I would put the horses away while you would put the...
Yeah, we'd plan it in advance and work it out.
Okay, so you guys can work this out.
Sure. Well, that's what I'm hoping, you know? I've had good luck, and I've had all kinds of coordination and just, just nothing but happiness in the town of Milton.
Good to know.
It's a great place to live. We still number three?
Yeah.
Number two? How can you beat that?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak? Please come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Brian Walsh, and for thirty years, I've lived at fifty-six Pleasant Street, which is, it's on the maps here, just outside the property. As you can imagine, in the thirty years I've been there, I tell you, unfortunately, most of the neighbors that were there when I moved in have moved out or passed away, really good people, including Mrs. O'Neil and Mrs. Murphy, the properties are involved. One of the few neighbors that is still there, Kathy Grant, was, wanted to be here tonight, and she had, I apparently reached out to the chairman and asked about the timing and all, and she unfortunately physically was not able to come tonight. She's brought, gave me a letter and asked me if I would drop it off, but previous to this, she and I had discussed a couple of issues that I also feel are reasonable. She has a few more here on her letter, and so, Mr. Chairman, if you're amenable to it, I'd like, it's a brief letter, I'd like to read it.
Please go.
I'll summarize it at the end. Again, this is from, well, this letter is to address to the planning board in regard to the proposal of subdivision of thirty-three and forty-one Pleasant Street. My name is Kathleen Grant. I have resided at twenty-seven Pleasant Street for forty-five years. This proposed subdivision directly abuts my property line, and the following are a list of my concerns. One is noise factor. Jackhammers, trucks coming and going and beeping, that it happens, especially when they back up, and at the old quarry with the ledge and the boulders, could they use the old dump road to access the site? The question she's asking when they're, during the construction period. This town doesn't apparently have a ruling and needs a ruling to address the noise issue. She suggests, and this is something I discussed at length with her previous to knowing I was going to be reading this letter, and agree with her, it makes a lot of sense to me. She suggests a starting time of eight AM, this is during the construction period, and a finishing time of four PM, out of concern of the people needing peace and quiet in their homes, the peaceful enjoyment of their own homes in the neighborhood. What she doesn't have written here, we discussed at length, and we think that makes sense, it'd be Monday through Friday, so the construction, it'll be significant instruction, doesn't happen Sundays and Saturdays. Two, congestion, this one-way section of Pleasant Street. This is a major traffic cut-through from six forty-five to nine thirty AM, and again at four thirty to five forty-five PM. Plus parking on both sides of the street near the Cookie Factory, and adding nine more homes to this scenario with their children, will need some sort of traffic control, at least during the construction, i.e. policemen. And I'm reading it directly from here. Number three, strain on utilities. They're cleaning a tap into water, sewer, electric, and gas in this small section. Is the new road a private or public utility? And what about streetlights? And I know that was discussed here, and she would have noted that. Four is insurance. This insurance, another interesting area that I discussed at length with her, and it thinks makes sense, and this may be standard operating procedure, we just did not know. Is this construction company bonded and insured for resulting damage to any properties due to and during the construction? And with the possibility of a potential developer going bankrupt, is there bonding and insurance to prevent or handle the cleanup of the site if something like that would happen? And she, she says here, "I have an artisan, excuse me, an artesian well, which might be in jeopardy of contamination during the construction, and would that be protected if the company were bonded and insured?" And by the way, she does have an artesian well, and for years, I can tell you... And by the way, she does have an artesian well, and for years, I can tell you, I drove by the small sign her husband Jeff had had out saying Hidden Brook. There is a Hidden Brook that she notes comes under the property, and they did an artesian well deep below it to provide water for their property. Anyway, aside. Number five, and this is the last point, since I'm a direct abbot to the noise and construction, this will impinge on my ability for my peaceful and quiet enjoyment of my property. To that end, I am requesting an adjustment to my real estate taxes for the duration. And it's signed. Thank you for taking this into consideration. Sincerely, Kathleen Grant from 27 Pleasant Street. So Kathleen, there's only two of the abotters, the people in the neighborhood that I recall are still there when I moved in 30 years, and she's been there 45 years. So, I'm going to leave that with you, Chairman. And I hope, thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
I hope you could, at the appropriate time, address if it's reasonable or feasible to have those hours of operation and avoid weekends and the insurance issue. And thank you for your time and everything you do for the town.
Very much. Does anybody else wish to speak? No? In that case, Paul, you can come forward and address the questions that we had on truck access, the start and ending times and days of the week, congestion and traffic detail, the insurance issues and bonding, and the artesian well. I'm afraid the real estate taxes are out with our jurisdictions, so.
Regarding the construction access, there is no other access from behind the property quarry. The town access road doesn't directly connect to this property, so we couldn't get through there if we wanted to. Plus, 100-foot no disturbance area is very close to the town property line, there's very little room to get through there. I think we can manage the construction in a way that won't create a lot of disturbance in the neighborhood during the construction of the roadway. Regarding the hours of operation, I, we just anticipated working under the standard hours that have been issued in previous subdivisions, and weren't looking for anything different than that. I'll let Mr. Salberti address the bonding and his company's issues, insurance. I think it's pretty straightforward.
Yes, we are bonded and insured. We have a, the standard general liability, workman's comp, and then umbrella policies as well. It's up to, I think, 10 million.
Protection of the artesian well? You probably have to check the location first.
Yes.
If that's something we want you to follow up with.
Have our engineer located. I'm not sure exactly where it is, but we don't intend to do any blasting, so I'm sure we can avoid. And it doesn't appear on that side, on her, on the grant side, that there's going to be ledge where those homes are going in that are abot her from the test holes we did earlier.
What sort of fence is there on the Grant property line?
I believe it's a wooden fence, isn't it?
Yeah, I think it's a four-foot.
Yeah, it's a five-foot wooden fence I think she has on her property right now. We, you know, some of the neighbors might prefer fence and some may want plantings. You know, that's something we discussed with them and before we made a final decision of what we'd install for a buffer.
And traffic control during construction, especially during the hours, it is quite an impressive cut-through. It's amazing how quickly people can come off Randolph and swing into that area. So, have you considered how you're going to deal with the unexpected surprise of a few construction trucks for them when they attempt that?
Yeah. I mean, we'd have your standard, you know, construction entrance with, you know, with, you know, six-foot fence around the perimeter of the site. And this, the cuts and fills, there's not a lot of material leaving the site, so we're going to try to manage the materials on-site to, you know, limit the amount of trucks coming, entering and exiting the site.
We might consider, board members, when we discuss this further, we may want to consider asking for some sort of sign on the junction between Randolph and Pleasant to give people fair warning that.
Construction seek alternate routes.
Yes, exactly. Maybe we could leave that up permanently.
I would like to say that.
We could knock a truck away across the. We could prepare a traffic management plan.
That would be very helpful.
It's a simple plan, though, show, you know, all the signage, the construction entrance, the gate, the fencing, and then you could comment on that.
I mean, the good thing is Mr. Salberti is going to do all this construction himself. He has his own company that will do all the site work, so it's not like he's bringing in a contractor who might not be aware of all the important things the neighborhood is looking for.
Yes, Brian.
Could we just go back to hours for a minute? So, you're looking for standard hours. Could you just help us to find that? Is it, we were asked for eight to four and Monday to Friday, so can you just specifically respond to those two things?
You know, most companies work Saturdays. We'd definitely like to work Saturdays. You know, the more hours we get, the quicker the work gets done. Each is a relatively, somewhat of a late, you know, I think the town bylaws allow a seven o'clock start in the morning. So, do you have any preference on that?
I would prefer seven, and Saturdays would be just as needed, pretty much. So, seven to three, I think.
We might want to define the as-needed, I think, heavy construction on Saturdays, but we can talk about that more as we work our way through.
Typically, it's on Monday through Friday, work week for us.
Yes.
On the St. Pius property, the Windmere, we came to an agreement there about people being able to arrive on-site, I believe it was.
Yes.
And then the equipment deliveries couldn't start as soon as people could arrive on-site.
Right, that's correct.
So, that might be something we refer back.
Pull that from Windmere and have a look. Yeah, we should pull that out and see what that is.
Yeah, something like that would be fine. You know, we wouldn't have 6:00, 6:00 a.m. deliveries and things like that to disturb the neighborhood.
And certainly managing, I think, to your point on the traffic management plan, making sure that you don't have three trucks, three large trucks arriving simultaneously to... Any other questions from board members? If not, it looks like we are continuing this. Obviously, we're going to want you to respond to the engineer's letter. Bill, you've got some, something?
I would like you to address the stormwater review, which, if you can do that now, I can set that up, otherwise we're pushing back a few more weeks.
Yes, stormwater review.
That goes back to.
Who's going to review it?
We'd go back to Mrs. Eggleston.
Town engineer doesn't have capacity at the moment?
They asked that it go to.
Okay.
Which is traditional.
Sometimes he does it, sometimes.
Losing one of your engineers.
Oh, well, that doesn't help. Okay, so yes, can we get that started?
Ask them, not me.
Can we get the stormwater review started?
Yes. Do we contact directly and submit the plans, or will the?
I will, you'll give them to me and I'll get them to her. She actually, who are you using at CEC? Who should lead person?
Ken.
Ken.
Ken?
Yep.
I'll have her call Ken.
Is there a retainer required for services?
We'll talk.
So, then our next meeting, which was originally scheduled for November 12th, and we have a conflict. I know you sent out a poll, Tim. Did you come up with a?
I got a few.
A date that.
Can you poke that over?
I think it was on a date, I thought it was for Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Well, I was told somebody had a conflict on the 12th, if that's not true.
I do.
Yes, okay.
So, the previous Thursday, the 5th, looks no good. The next Thursday, the 19th, as far as what I heard, is okay. And then, I mean, I don't know what the appetite is for other days of the week. But the 4th, the 18th, the 16th, the 24th, the 25th, the 27th are no good, but otherwise.
So, the 19th's looking really good, guys. What do you think?
Pretty late. What about the Monday after the 12th?
Monday after the 12th, the 16th?
16th.
Not, not, not great. One of the few days that isn't wide open.
No. Okay.
Pushing right up to the 19th.
Is that 16 because of your schedule or rooms?
It's because of the schedule of certain board members.
These board members.
What else is currently scheduled right now?
We have nothing else scheduled right, I mean, we have the 12th scheduled, but.
The 17th is.
17th I have open, but other people may not.
I do not.
Why don't we do the 19th?
I think the 19th's looking pretty good.
Yeah, I have a potential conflict, so that's why I'm wondering if you just keep it the 12th, and I can watch the meeting.
Okay.
Assuming you're not going to vote that night, I'm happy to just watch the meeting.
All right, then let's keep it the 12th in that case. Brian will watch the meeting.
Great.
Excellent. 7:15 on the 12th. We don't have anything else scheduled, do we, yet?
No, I don't.
All right, 7:15 on the 12th it is.
But we will probably be further discussing there on the 12th.
Then that doesn't work, because I've already missed one.
The 5th?
So, that.
Let me look at the 5th. How many people had conflicts on the 5th?
Just one.
That would be me. Let me have a look at my calendar. My two sets of calendars.
Oh, yeah, I also have a conflict on the 5th, but.
You don't have to vote, however, so you're good.
Doesn't make a difference.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I don't. No, I'm all set on the 5th.
You're leaving on the 6th.
I'm easy-peasy on the 5th, yeah.
Okay. All right, let me look at my 5th. I can make the 5th. Oh, no, sorry, I can't make the 5th. I absolutely, I was looking at the wrong part. I absolutely cannot make the 5th. I have a client meeting.
Well, you said two different things.
Yes, well, I was looking at the wrong part of the schedule.
I could do the 4th.
How about the 9th?
I could do the 4th.
I can also do the 9th.
And I could do the 9th.
Those are both okay for me.
9th, anybody else have any?
I'd like the 9th.
Night that is.
Day of the week is the 9th.
Monday.
Monday.
Monday, Monday.
I'll need you to run my daughter that night.
All right, so the 9th at 7:15. Great, thank you.
Works, thank you.
And we can talk about other dates towards the end of the meeting. All right. Next on the schedule is our continued discussion of Thayer Nursery. You should have handed out tonight, where did mine go? You should have another, number of things that were handed out tonight, one of which is a letter from an insurance agency about lighting, one of which is Chapter 48 zoning Section 3, which is, I'm not sure who put that in there. And then you have the draft special permit. You will see that it says last updated October 22nd with my initials on it. It has page numbers, always useful, that is what we're going to be working from. So, it should have been handed out in the mater, yes, it's going, Joe, I just saw it.
Oh, but that one, this, okay. Got it, this one?
As long as it says October 22nd, 2015, my initials, that is the one we're going to be using. And, yeah, those were all other items in there. Oh, there was an email from Mr. Johannin there as well, which you guys can read all the extra mute stuff, but let's start with the draft special permit. We are going to be going through it. As you know, the public hearing is now closed, so we're going to be going through the draft special permit item by item. I understand that the applicant has some questions about some of the provisions that are in here, so obviously we get those. If you have questions for the applicant as we go through this, please direct them to me, because we're in a public meeting and not a public hearing, there is no, going to be no public comment. So, you'll see when you look at the draft special permit, first of all, I understand in one of the newspapers, it was announced that we had approved the application, and I just want to clarify that that is not true. The question for the board at the last time was simply whether I should be drafting something for us to discuss, and the positive or the negative, and I understand that must have gotten mistranslated. So, I want to just clarify to everybody that no vote of either approval or denial has been taken by the planning board on this. Text in bold is boilerplate language that you will have seen in other special permit decisions that we've done. Underlined text within that boilerplate indicates where the language has been changed to be specific to this application. Red text indicates missing information or a question the board needs to answer as part of our deliberations. Green text is text directly taken from Section N, and not all of the green, all of the text in here, some of the text in here is in black, it's been taken from Section N, but that was coming out of the draft order of conditions that we've been working from. Blue text indicates language taken from one of the special permits or the 2001 decision from the ZBA. So, I'm going to walk you through it, and then we'll stop at the appropriate points. The first part is a boilerplate language that says, you know, we are the special permit granting authority, that we're doing this under Section 3 subsection N, that we are, obviously, if the board approves it, granting a special permit for landscaping business use, identifies the owner and the applicants, and refers to them as applicant, identifies the lots of land, and we need to actually talk about the lots of land. There are three in the vicinity of where we've been doing our site walks, 270 Hillside Street, 0 and 24 Forest Street. There are also 217 and 237 Hillside Street. I believe the applicant had indicated that the landscaping equipment needs access to those for accessing compost and other items stored on there. So, we need to talk about putting those, how we deal with those. It then goes to say that the special permit is going to be constructed, the conditions that require construction will be constructed as shown on the plan with X number of sheets, and that we're referring to those as site plan, and that we're granting site plan approval, again, if the board agrees to do that. The next section, I'll just run you through the sections, and then we'll come back and do them in detail. Section 1, authorized development, is what talks about the things that are actually being physically constructed on the site. So, the fence is being physically constructed, the drainage improvements, the landing care yard, it requires that they be maintained, and we're not authorizing the expansion of anything that has been granted by a special permit. Again, this is all up for discussion. Section number 2 is authorized uses. You'll see pulled out quite a bit from the zoning on that, and then notes that, notes what they can do. If you remember from the zoning, there's a definition of the landscaping business, and then there are things that the landscaping business is allowed to do under the zoning, and then there are things that the landscaping business may do if this planning board allows it. So, that pulls in everything from the zoning that we have talked about in the past. We also talked about not allowing things that weren't in the zoning, and so there's a section on that, a section on hours. 3 basically says, again, that this is site plan approval, and that there's conditions for that. 4 is the zoning compliance and the special permit requirements, and that's where most of the conditions from the draft that we've been discussing come into that. So, purpose of the special permit, which we'll talk about later, business uses, employees, vehicles, materials, firewood, parking, mitigation. Then we do the determination, the compliance with the standards for granting the special permit, and that talks about the, without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantial derogation from the intent to the purpose of this bylaw, this is all boilerplate. And then required of compliance with all matters, so we have enforcement, requires the applicant to allow access to all lots under the special permit for the purpose of inspection to the building inspector and his designee at any time. Drainage, fence and landscaping, lighting, signs, the specific rules for vehicles, noise, onsite traffic loading and deliveries, outside truck traffic, street improvements, dumpsters, storage of mulch and compost, storage of fertilizer, storage of firewoods, and the operations surrounding those, snow and ice operations. Then something that we haven't discussed before, but in the zoning is the term. The zoning allows us to do an initial term of three years or fewer, and then how they would, then the zoning allows a renewal of additional terms of five years or shorter period, and it sets up how they would apply for that renewal, which is not specified in the zoning. The zoning actually specifies, there are two ways that the, it can be revoked, obviously we can choose not to renew it when it comes up in front of the planning board again. The zoning specifies that it can also be revoked by the Board of Appeals upon application by the building commissioner. And discussion of how it'd be transferred to. And discussion of how it'd be transferred to a third party if we vote to allow that. And then the final boilerplate is the recording with the registry of deeds. There's also one appendix, obviously, the plans would be attached, but there's one appendix so far, which is the stormwater operations and maintenance plan that the applicant submitted. So that's the basics of it. I think we should start at the beginning and walk our way through. So I would start, I think, you all have comments on the earlier draft that you've seen. There are some changes from that, and we can go through that as we go, so if you want to start...
Really, really quick, I'm on the top, zero and two Forest Street, which would be twenty-four Forest Street.
Zero and twenty-four, yeah, thank you, Forest Street. So probably the first question becomes, since it's at the beginning there and called out in red, do we include two seventeen and two thirty-seven Hillside Street as well? So...
I guess my thinking on that, I had called that out here. It seems like we should include them on the basis that it's, we're defining what each lot is being used for. So while they're included in the application, I think inclusion in the application doesn't by inclusion necessarily give those lots any rights.
Well, this is now including it in the special permit, so we are now setting the conditions. And when we get to the part where there is different language from the Board of Appeals, I put that in for reference so you can see it. By granting a special permit, we may or may not choose to either keep it, modify it, or discard it, depending on what we choose to do. So, right now, the applicant has stated that they use different lots for different purposes. The question has been, do we limit, the question is, do we limit the landscaping uses to two seventy Hillside and zero and twenty-four Forest, or do we feel that they do in fact have reason to access the other two for the purpose of the landscaping? Because remember, that's what we're authorizing, and so we need to continue to include them.
So, I understand what you're saying. So Article two, section two, has a use table that specifically designs, defines what lots are used for what purpose.
Article two, section two no longer has that use table.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That is one of the changes.
Okay.
And that was after a conversation with town council.
Okay, so, then I'm going to revise my statement and say that, I don't necessarily think they should be included. I'm just hearing what others say. My statement was based on being able to include them in that use table.
Yeah. There was a...
I'll try to look at both at the same, I'll look at both at the same time.
We are to, there are some changes. We are to keep to authorizing the zoning, authorizing the landscaping business, yes.
Two thirty-seven are on the other side of the street?
Yes, they're the one that's a little bit further down, so...
Were there any plans?
Is the name of the hospital?
Yeah, we actually, the first sidewalk, we went down to them.
And I'm just trying to remember that what we saw on those plans was...
Mulch.
What was it? Was it related to nursery or was it related to landscaping? I can't recall.
So, if that's a question you want to, Bill? Two seventeen and two thirty-seven Hillside. Your views on including them in the special permit, allowing landscaping use on those?
I think you should.
And?
If the truck goes in, you want to be able to...
And they're accessing mulch and compost, and then that allows us to regulate any activity on those sites under the landscaping business.
Under the landscaping business.
Okay. So you're all comfortable with that?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. I guess, I'm just, I'm comfortable with that. I'm just curious as to whether they can do landscaping. How do they store mulch over there under the landscaping business without having bins?
It's more compost than mulch.
Okay.
The mulch is at the other site. This is just...
Okay. Fair enough, it allows us to govern, it allows us to govern them, so it's, I think they should be included.
I have a comment.
Yes.
If you look at section three of, or paragraph three of the zoning, it says a landscaping business may be located on a lot or lots in conjunction with other uses permissible in a residence district, including residential use, provided that if there shall be any involvement between the landscaping use and another use, the requirements of this subsection shall apply to that other use.
Yes.
So we have to, it has to be clear that there is no involvement between the uses, the landscaping use and any other use, because if there is, we've got to address it.
So on page two, section two authorized uses, paragraph two, two-two-two, what we have is pretty much the same thing you just said, Alex. Under subsection N three, a landscaping business may be located on a lot or lots in conjunction with other uses permissible in a residence district, including residential use, an agricultural use defined by and conducted in accordance with MGLC one twenty-eight S one and MGLC forty A S three, and greenhouse and/or nursery use is defined by and conducted in accordance with section three subsections four B and seven D of the zoning bylaws of the Town of Milton. If there is any involvement between the landscaping use and another use, the requirements of this, I should say this special permit rather than subsection, this special permit shall apply to that other use.
The, I'm not sure that there is an agricultural use on this site. It seems to me there's a nursery use and a residential use, and if there, there may be an agricultural use, but there may not be. So I don't think that you should, you should necessarily posit that there is one.
We should, we should. This is now the board, this is a we rather than a I, so you are suggesting...
Posit that. I mean, if there is an agricultural use on a lot, that's fine. Then it can be, it can, it can remain, but it does seem to me that saying that there is an agricultural use on these premises is...
That's why the table came out.
Giving away, giving away something that is, it could be contested.
They store trees there now.
This test doesn't say it's an agricultural.
They store trees there now. Is that...
The table did, which is why the table came out, yes, exactly.
What's wrong with that?
Nothing, and that's why...
But that's not agricultural, that's nursery.
Nursery is agricultural.
Oh, no, 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 we are not doing that argument here. Just take that one right out.
It isn't.
Yes.
Nursery is not agricultural.
No.
Read the bottom.
No, 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 no.
Not under our zoning.
We are governing the landscaping.
In any case, it doesn't say there's agriculture here, so it's a move.
It doesn't say. It says if it's, if there, it says it may exist on the lot. It does not say that there is.
There is existence on that.
So, it's fine the way it is.
Yes.
Okay, so leave. All right.
I have a question about the applicant.
Yes.
Now, the initial applicant in sixty-seven was Robert Oldfield and Margaret T. Oldfield.
Yes.
And I can certainly see that Maggie and Josh are successors. And I just wonder why we're including, how we're including the Oldfield Family LLC and the Thayer Nursery Corp. And what happens if one of them drops out? Or what happens if they all drop out and the Thayer Nursery Corp is left and sold to someone else?
That is a very good question. And I was kind of hoping somebody would bring it up. So, I don't know the answer to that. I know why it's in here, and I can tell you that. How the board wants to deal with it is another matter. So, on the application, this is page one, bottom paragraph. On the application from the applicant, they list the owner, which is the Oldfield Family LLC, and the applicants, Josh Oldfield, Maggie Oldfield, and the Thayer Nursery Corp. You are absolutely correct, of course, in nineteen sixty-seven, the special permit was granted to Robert Oldfield and his wife, Margaret, excuse me, Margaret T. Oldfield. The nineteen eighty-seven permit, and it was only to them, not to anybody else. The nineteen eighty-seven permit added Maggie and Josh, which gives them standing to apply for this. I put everybody that was listed on the application in so that the board can discuss it. The question is a good one, because the Thayer Nursery Corp and Oldfield Family LLC have lives, as it were, as entities beyond the lifespan of Josh and Maggie. And I think this comes into play both in this initial section and then on the, in that last section where I talked about
Sold.
It being sold, page eleven, number twelve. In the event that the land and business is transferred to a third party, said third party shall seek to continue operation of landscaping business use, then a new special permit application shall be required under the provisions of section three N. The other possibility of doing that, of course, is not allowing the sale of the business, in which case you may want to, say, look, it's just to Maggie and Josh, and if anybody else comes in, they don't get the...
Isn't that, isn't that what it essence says?
Well, you're right, you're giving them a permit, if they try to sell it to anybody else, other people have to come back.
But the way, but probably...
You've got to define business. I mean, what is the business?
It would be the landscaping business that we're permitting.
But I understand, but is it their nursery corp? Is that the business?
Yes.
But if that's the business, you have to say so.
No, that's my, that's my affirmative, that's the question.
That is the question. What is the business that'd be sold?
So if you are, are you granting, are we, the planning board, granting this solely to Maggie and Josh, who at some point may retire, stop the business whatsoever, seek to sell it to somebody else, in which they, they would have to come back in? Are you granting it to Thayer Nursery Corp as an entity who then could sell it on to somebody else? They'd still have to come back into the planning board, but my question is, who do you want to grant the special permit to? I put it in for everybody who applied.
Who is Thayer Nursery Corp?
Who are the people behind Thayer Nursery Corp?
I mean, unless we knew that, we wouldn't know if they sold it or what they'd do, because we wouldn't know who we wanted to start with.
It seems to me that we'd want to allow the owners, if Thayer Nursery Corp is one of, is part of the ownership, that we'd want to allow the owners an opportunity to not devalue their business by not being able to sell it to somebody who would have an opportunity to come in and ask for a special permit to continue the operation of the business in the manner that it had been conducted. So, it seems as if, what, the individuals, Maggie and Josh, have children and family members. Why would we put such a restriction on ownership if we're asking the new owner to come in and get a new special permit?
So just to clarify, we're not putting a restriction on ownership, we're putting a restriction on who is granted the special permit. Potentially putting a restriction on who's granted the special permit.
So...
But there's no, there's no, if, if the special permit is granted to people who don't own a business, I'm not sure I'm understanding the distinction.
To the, I'm not sure how we grant an individual a permit to have, to, for a business use. So I think you, my understanding would be we would grant this to a business, and the business would operate, in this particular case, under the Oldfields. I suppose we could restrict the business to operate under the Oldfields, that would seem unusual to me.
You cannot grant it just to Thayer Nursery. Maggie and Josh have to have the grant as individuals, because it is their ability to inherit from their father under the eighty-seven that allowed, they were named under the eighty-seven permit, and the zoning requires that somebody who had that permit...
Do we need to restrict it to them being the only holders?
I'm asking if you want to, yes, yes.
Theoretically, I mean, we could theoretically, I think this original special permit limited it to Oldfields and his heirs, so it left it as a family business, didn't it?
Let me pull it out.
You have restricted it here, right? The only thing that seems to be missing to me...
Well, we have it because we haven't voted on it, that's...
Although, but the only thing that seems to be missing to me is who, who is Thayer Nursery Corp? And after that...
So we can, we can have that asked. We had that information at one point, I was going to look at that.
You can put an appendix in, it says, you know, look at appendix A and identify who it is, but...
Well, why do you have to, it says it goes to Oldfield...
I've got the decision.
Bob Oldfield or his successors in interest. And...
So it's not limited to a relation, it's a successor in interest?
It says successors in interest, and...
So sixty-seven says this permit runs to you personally, including any assistance only, and shall not be assigned or transferred to any other person. Eighty-seven says, amends that to read, this permit runs to the applicants and their children personally, including any assistance only, and shall not be assigned or transferred to any other person.
Okay, that's, that permit.
Yes.
And so...
So the question is...
The question is, who is the LLC and the Thayer Nursery Corp? Are they successors in interest or not? Because if they're not successors in interest, then presumably they wouldn't get a permit. And then the question, it seems to me, is that what happened if Maggie and Josh both say, well, we're out of here, leaving Thayer Nursery? There's nothing to say, I mean, is that going to be a significant event? I mean, if it is, the permit should say so. Does there always have to be continuity of all four individuals sort of being together, or one drop out, et cetera? I mean, if they, if they can drop out, then the planning, there should be a provision that the planning board can give permission for this to happen.
You said successors in interest, I didn't hear that. All I heard was children.
Successes in interest is not in here.
Then all it is is children.
The permit runs to the applicants and their children personally, including any assistance only, and shall not be assigned or transferred to any other person.
So the Oldfield family is apparently, is to be, kind of obviously, family.
Well, Oldfield Family LLC, though, it's an LLC, it's a limited life, yeah, so just to clarify that.
But if we identify who's behind the Oldfield Family LLC and Thayer Nursery Corp, and if those are children, then we're all set. And if anything changes on here, then they should need an amendment. If one person drops out, then it needs to be amended.
The zoning talks about predecessors in interest. That the applicant or applicants or their predecessors in interest on that date held a special permit or use variance. I guess it is Maggie and Josh who are the people who hold this permit. So I guess maybe if there's good reason to include someone else, we should know it.
All right, so then we have the question on the ownership. We were provided with that information. I do not have it in front of me. So I think we should ask...
Then beyond that, just real brief, on twelve, the question from what business? In the event that the land and landscape business is transferred, would that take care of it?
Sorry, Mike, where were you?
Page eleven, number twelve.
Page eleven, item twelve.
Item twelve.
One if the land isn't transferred.
Well, we're not concerned about the transfer of the land, we're concerned about the transfer of the business. The business could move in on site.
In a sense, we ain't if the business moves offsite.
And, yeah, well, that's true. So the land and the business are tied together. If the business is transferred...
As far as our permit's concerned, the land and the business are tied together.
So if the business is sold and moved offsite, then we don't worry about it, right, exactly.
Certainly, then they...
But if the business is sold, they stay on site.
Well, that's why we keep the land and the business.
I would propose, I would, I would be in favor of at least allowing the same concession that the eighty-seven permit gives and allow this to be transferred to the children of Maggie.
Well, in essence, there's nothing to stop them from transferring, if they, well, they can't transfer the permit, they can ask to reapply, I suppose.
I mean, I think if, I think the question is who it's running to. I think we've answered the question that if they transfer it, they have to go back for a new special permit, so that's a, section twelve covers that. The question is, would a, would a succession to the children constitute a transfer? And I'm proposing that we copy the eighty-seven language and say that a, the business transferring to the children would be outside of the bounds of what a transfer would be considered here.
That's fine.
Okay, so then twelve would not apply to the children that drop in.
Nobody asks that, but I think it's very generous.
Well, I think it's inconsistent with the eighty-seven permit, and I think the intent was that this was a family business that we're trying to keep in mind.
Yeah, okay. All right. So does that mean we're taking owner Oldfield Family and Thayer Nursery Corp off?
I think we've asked...
Amendment, or appendix in the back that says that the owners of the LLC and the owners of the Thayer Nursery, Maggie and Josh, and that would be...
That identifies it, okay.
Be redundant, I agree.
Yep, fine, I think that, I think that's a good solution.
I think that there are other, other people involved.
If there's another family member in there, that's fine as well.
Okay. So then we'll...
Not necessarily, Mike.
It says he can transfer it to his family. Children. And I'm assuming when I say other family members, there are other children.
So what we'll do is, we'll add an appendix that identifies who they are, because I know we've had that information, I just don't have it in front of me. And then we can have one more review when we get that into the next iteration. All right, so the plan, which is starting on the top of page two. The site plan will be the site plan, and we will get a final copy of... The site plan will be the site plan, and we will get a final copy of everything, showing everything that we have put into here.
We need to look at this, we need to know what's going to be in that plan. I mean, not everything that's been submitted is going to be in it.
But we're telling them.
No, I understand, but we need a specification now of what the plan is. So we can see what's in the plan, what is said on the plan. I mean, an awful lot of this stuff requires that it be specified in the plan.
Now, they did submit a revised plan pretty recently, right?
I think we've gone through this quite a bit. I think it behooves the applicant to make sure that they've taken notes and covered everything and get it on the plan. And when they give us the plan, if it doesn't have everything we thought it would have or requested, then that'll only delay them.
Then we need to apply the plan now.
So it behooves them to make it right.
We need to know what, if we're writing a permit and relying on what's written on the plan, we've got to know what's written on the plan.
Sure, of course we do.
Okay. So when we get that plan, these particular items will be clarified in that.
Everything.
Yes? No, 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 these particular.
Yeah.
In section one, when we get the plan, the items that are in section one will be described based on what's in the plan. Now, later in this document, we already have some of those out there, the description of the fence, for example.
Location, yeah.
But this section, this authorized development is the part where we talk about the items that need to be constructed, yes.
Question as to whether we should add sprinklers, lighting, parking areas, pedestrian areas, and loading areas.
As items that are being constructed? Okay, so let me get that list again. Sprinklers, lighting.
An item six.
Correct.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, on what?
An item six on this list of what we're going to expect to see identified on the plan.
I was going to put it under three, right, yeah, exactly. But yes, I'm sorry, now I understand the number six reference.
Sprinklers, lighting.
Sprinklers, lighting, parking areas, pedestrian paths, loading areas.
This is what we expect to be clarified on the plan.
Yes, correct. Loading and storage areas.
Storage areas, okay. All right.
I wouldn't say this. I'd say that authorized development is, you know, this is very general. All these things are very general. They don't actually have any teeth.
Well, they will have the teeth, yes.
Teeth come later.
Yes.
Well, the plan will put some teeth into it.
No, but Alex's point is, in the document, the teeth should come later. Yes?
My point is this. If you look at the zoning, under four.
Paul is in favor of looking at the zoning.
It says, "An application for a special permit for landscaping business use shall include the following plans, rules, and specifications." And then it lists A through S. And then in five, approval of plans. All these things are supposed to be specified under these separate plans, these separate items.
Yes.
And they've given us the material, I think. They've given us a lot of material. And someone's got to go through it and take these various items out of that material so that we know what each of these plans is. Then it says, "As part of the special permit, the planning board shall approve plans, rules, and specification, which the board deems adequate, under each of the foregoing paragraphs. Insofar as the material submitted by an applicant with the application for a special permit may be inadequate or fail to advance the purpose of this subsection, the planning board shall require its revision." So what I'm suggesting is, rather than send it back to them and saying, "We don't like this", first of all, we've got to know what the various plans are for these sub-paragraphs. And then we should review them, and we should specify whether each is adequate, because that's what the zoning says we have to do.
So.
It seems to me that this special permit should be structured to follow the zoning.
So if you start under zoning compliance, section four on page three, you will see those categories, and then section five, the conditions under there, do in fact follow those. Now, some of those were repeated in both four and seven. So rather than repeat them multiple times, I have grouped them where they seem to be appropriate. But all of those categories have been covered in this special permit.
They may be covered, but do we have the plans they've submitted? Like, the rules for the operation of the business that they were supposed to submit? Do we have those rules?
What we have is incorporated from their application into this and has been pulled by Tim and myself from the materials that they gave us. What we have is in the special.
Where are the rules?
Well, let's see.
That they have.
Which part of the operation rules did you want?
That they, I want the rules that they have established for the various things required by the zoning.
So we have the activity, the hours are in here, what they're allowed to do.
Have they established that as a rule?
We're established it as a rule.
No, that's not what the zoning says. We, if that's what the zoning said, we could do that. But that's not what it says.
So we've got the employees, we have the vehicles.
It says, "A list of the rules proposed to be imposed by the special permit to ensure that vehicles and equipment are shut off and not idling, that employees do their work efficiently and quietly. Earphones shall be required, CD players are in use, loudspeakers and amplified music shall not be used in business operations."
So noise on page nine, under seven, landscape equip, seven A, landscape equipment shall not be.
You're jumping all through this.
I'm not, I've, I have grouped them.
It's supposed to be in one place.
Alex, the zoning has it in multiple places. I have grouped it.
Has it in two places.
Right, which is repetitive. I have grouped it so that everything that deals with noise is under noise. Everything that deals with onsite traffic and loading and deliveries is under that section. Everything that deals with the rule for a vehicle is under that section, and it's not scattered throughout.
So a question, may I ask? Where we are referring to a set of documents, like the plans, right?
What page are you on, you have plans, yeah?
On two.
Okay, yes.
We're going to refer to actual sheets with dates, right? I mean, that's where the XXX is.
Yes, that would go in. And if you remember, did we put the set of plans under the, I didn't bring the draft order of conditions with me. One of the, one of the orders of conditions, we had actually listed out every single plan and what had to be in it. So I'll put that back in this draft.
The one very simple thing we could do is, what I think you had to do, we could cross-reference there where it says parking. You could say, not C, but just drawing S twelve, whatever.
Right, yeah. And I had actually done that at one point and took it back out again.
Not everything's applicable. You know, fence, fence, drawing X.
But, and then also to.
You know, the fence is supposed to be shown on a plan.
It is, yes.
And the landscaping is supposed to be shown around the fence on a plan.
It is, it is.
It is.
It is. We've received a plan that has it on there, and it will be, because we have to attach it to the special permit.
So, but.
And it shows the fence at the right elevation, right?
I don't know if this is the most current one, but.
That's, I was going to.
I think that's an old one, yeah.
Have we, I know, we have seen, I've got the plans, but have we seen the final plan that they think is going to be part of this?
The applicant requested that we tell them when we were ready for them to do that.
I think we're getting ready.
And I think we're ready.
They could take this, they could go and fix the plan and say, "Does it meet what they did here?" Because if it doesn't, we're going to tell them. It's going to delay them, not us.
I think you're correct.
Okay, so then, if I may continue.
That's all I meant earlier. It'd be their best interest to make sure the plan meets what's in here.
Great, I agree. But the other thing is, if we wanted to go back and ask them to update certain things, like here, there's a restatement of operations and mitigation plans dated June fifteen. If, to Alex's point, and he wants to be able, and I don't know if I'm misinterpreting you, Alex, you can correct me if I'm, but if it's supposed to come from the applicant, then we could, just as we refer to drawings, we could go back and refer to particular materials that were submitted to us, instead of having to restate them all in the language of the permit. Is that true? These are more detailed, these might be even more detailed than what's contained in here. Just as we say, as according to the plan, parking, we give a little description, but then we refer back to the plan. If we did the same thing on mitigation measures, we give a description, then we refer back to the actual documents that were submitted.
Reference letter of X.
As an appendix.
There's one in the back, over there.
Yeah, so you could do the same thing. If that covers Alex's question or point about needing to have these.
I'd just be careful that, you know, it being some kind of letter or long terminology, that's what we're looking for, it doesn't.
Yeah, I mean, they, well, I guess.
I mean, it is, I've been confused at times that they're originally going to put up an eight-foot fence with a six-foot panel.
Right, that's the issue, because they're busy.
That was the only one, now it's before.
Now it's two, four and a half foot panels. So I would hope when they come back with a drawing, that it labels the fence as an eight-foot high fence like they have in the past, the same materials, labels the materials in some kind of legend.
Shows a section.
Says there's two panels, labels the panels as coming from such and such a producer or, you know, manufacturer, with some specs behind that, and that's what we get.
And they have to show the buildup of the wall.
That should be on the plan.
Okay, so then if we, if we said, if we went through this, if I may.
Yeah.
And it says, number one, fence sound attenuation related landscaping.
So you want.
So what we could say then is not only refer back to where you've written it in further detail, but to say then, ask the applicant, in order to define this on your plans, we'd like to see it not only in horizontally where it's going to go on the drawing, but we would like to see, if you, if you want to see confirmation, a section through a particular point of it where it shows.
Overlapping the fabric.
If there's a berm, and if there's a, you know, the relationship of that, and then the height and where the acoustic is being applied. So we can ask for that, and then they can submit that, you know, before this is actually finalized, right?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, I don't think we could finalize this without agreeing that we're looking at a drawing, that we say, "That's what we look for, that's what we're asking for, that's what we intended."
So instead of, so to be very clear, though, about what we're asking the applicant to provide, if we go through and we say, "Item one, here's what we'd like to see. Item two, here's what we'd like to see on the plan," and work our way through.
That should be, that is in here.
I think it is, I think it is.
Okay, so then we move then, you're saying, I'm late, page seven.
It's on page seven, fence and landscaping.
I read through this probably in an hour or two before I showed up here, and I think everything we've talked about.
That's what I'm trying to make sure tonight.
Maybe you could get more specific, we can walk through and say that and talk about it, but I think it's all pretty much covered.
That's why I'm making through. So in the previous special permits that we've done, we've had this section on authorized development, which gives a sort of short precis of what actual construction will be done, and then the details have been later in the special permit, which is how I set it up. So that's why I'm trying to move us through.
I'm sorry, I know you're trying to move us through, but can I go back?
No, absolutely, go back, yes.
I have a question for you in the preamble on page two.
Oh, in the preamble, good stuff, preambles, yes.
It says, "The proposed conditions required by this special permit shall be constructed as shown on a plan containing XX sheets."
Yes.
I've been suggesting that we add, "Shall be constructed as shown, and uses limited to areas depicted on." This may be in the wrong location, but I, but I wanted to make sure that we're referencing the fact that the areas shown on the plan are in fact part of this, part of the requirements here.
Does that throw a monkey wrench in the lots of land that are across the street?
I don't think so.
No, because we have, we have drawings for those lots of lands.
We have drawings for those, there were plans for that.
Those should be continued to, yeah.
I agree, there's been a few around.
Now, that actually brings up something else, which is originally, in some of my earlier drafts that I sort of kicked around on my computer, I, before doing something that was useful enough to send out, I had, I had mentioned each individual plan when I got to it. So, you know, when it was about landscaping, I mentioned landscaping plan. We're on the parking, I mentioned the parking plan. And actually, I think some of these are still in here. When I was looking at older special permits, it just said, "All of the sheets are referred to as the site plan," and then throughout the special permit, it just referred you back to the site plan. Would you prefer, I think what I'm hearing is that you would prefer to have it reference the specific sheet. So if we're talking about parking, rather than just say, "Go look at the site plan", you'd like it to reference the parking plan on the sheet. Does that make, is that, am I hearing that really?
We need to know what the sheets that encompass this plan are.
Yes, absolutely.
And they need to be listed. Do we need a list of the sheets so that we can each have a copy of the sheets and be able to look at the sheet in conjunction with reading the permit?
Yeah.
Because that's how it works.
Well, you have page two, where you have the XX. This should say, and I'm just off the cuff, using letters, numbers, the terminology. This should say, "Drawing sheet S one through S six."
Exactly. And you see in red, it has the name of the sheet, yes.
If we get to parking, it should say, "S two."
Right.
And in my mind, unless I'm misinterpreting or saying something that's not even necessary to say, it's going to be all right to say, "Parking, CS two, fence, CS two, lights, CS three."
Yeah, if they, yes, if they've, if they've put multiple things on there, yeah, I think that's.
And it's clear enough.
Yes. We're talking about parking, parking is depicted on S two or whatever, and we're good, yeah.
It seems to me that if we have the plan that we're going to require revisions to, which is the way it will work, I gather, that you've got to change this so that it is in accordance with what we want. We need to, we need to, we need the sheets. We need to know the sheets.
I don't think there's any disagreement there.
I'm hoping the next time that they give us those sheets, everything is going to comply.
Well, no, they have given us the material. We are now determining which parts of that material are going to be attached to this permit. And some of the plans are going to have to be changed, but we have to specify the changes on the plans that we want, and we have to know what the plans we're looking at are.
Right, there's no disagreement with you.
All right.
Again, we're on the same page.
We don't know that yet.
We're on the same page that.
We need those.
The engineer was still doing things with the drainage in conjunction with the, a butters engineer. That at one point in time did say, "Rather than reiterate, 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 when we get near the end, then we'll revise the sheets."
Right, we're now at the point where we have made.
Like I said about the six foot, pardon for interrupting, but the six foot, the four foot, now we're to a point, this is what we're looking for.
Right.
This document tells them how to revise their plans.
Exactly.
Get it to us as soon as possible so we can work it in conjunction with this and get to a conclusion in some form or sense.
So may I make a suggestion for those plans that we have? I don't think they're numbered. They have titles.
They should be numbered, yeah.
I'd like to have them numbered.
And I'd only suggest, the chair, that you suggest the applicants that they give us any literature they have, specifications on the, the sound attenuation material.
We have.
We have all that.
We do have it.
It's just, we've got a huge pile, but we've got several different, different kinds of attenuation.
Well, and that's not what we're looking for, we're looking for the one they want to use X.
I believe, Bill, you sent me the final sound attenuating, okay. All right, anything else on one, authorized development? I think we're all in agreement, we would like the plans now. All right. Two, authorized uses. So authorized uses, the number one authorizes it based on section N two of the zoning bylaw and how it defines a landscaping business. And you'll see the green is directly from the zoning. Subsection N three, we've already talked about, so we can skip over that. I mean, that's number two, three. This is the bit where it combines what the zoning allows a landscaping business to do with what we say it may do. I think the biggest thing in here that came up last time is the definition or how we deal with the idea of landscape ornamentations. So the applicant had provided us with a fairly broad definition. So the applicant had provided us with a fairly broad definition. We had kicked around a couple of ways of limiting that to something that would actually be installed by a landscaper as part of a landscaping design, was it fixed, was there a weight? So I'm looking for feedback from the board on that.
Well, you might define it.
It's been defined, it's fixed, installed by a landscaping, then the next question is...
As part of the design. Is that enough?
Where do you say?
Fixed.
So you guys, I bet you guys, I mean, board members last time, had talked about...
The building inspector has to be able to look at something and decide whether or not it's a fixed landscape ornamentation. And if you leave this very vague language here, he's not going to, he's not going to have a clue. In fact, in fact, anything in this permit that isn't apparent to the building inspector is not going to happen.
We weren't provided with a list.
We have, we were given a definition of landscape ornamentations. It was an extensive list, and to accept that particular definition would effectively allow the retail operations. Or it would permit retail operations because it was an extensive list of things that do not necessarily require a landscaper to install. So the question is, do we allow it at all? Landscape ornamentations at all? Do we attempt to find some sort of definition for it, or what?
I have a problem with the word ornamentation. I'm going to look up, yeah, I'm going to look at...
Please.
...Webster's for a moment.
Why don't you look at the Webster's?
The zoning does contain that word.
If the board asks, then I'll recognize.
It does contain the word.
Landscape ornamentations.
It doesn't define it.
It may be authorized.
Yes.
Right.
It may not also.
So fixture is something securely and usually permanently attached or appended as to a house, apartment, building. So I think, one of the things I proposed last time was changing the word ornamentation to fixture.
Okay. But what about if you had, let's say, a stone fountain or a stone ornament which needs a bobcat kind of delivery?
I had originally been thinking about that, is there a weight or a size requirement?
I mean, that's generally, that could be easily part of a landscape installation.
Yep.
And it's not permanently fixed because it weighs so much.
So I guess my question on something like that is from a landscaping operation perspective. We're allowing them to sell these things, right? Okay. Just trying to figure out if they need to be on site, but...
You'd mentioned that before as a possibility, I think, in passing, is in one of the comments.
I was thinking that, but couldn't figure it out, something they can plant, and oh, yeah.
But, you know, could they have...
It's into a fountain, I mean, do they, do we limit them to a display area?
Where you can order it, but they can't actually...
It has to be shipped to the job site.
It seems to me that if it is part of the deal, the landscape deal...
It's a total tailspin.
You get a landscape design and say, you know it has a fountain in it.
Right.
Then they can, in fact, do it, if it's part of the landscape design that they're under contract to perform, and...
So would that include a sitting, a seating area?
A what?
Furniture and a seating area.
Well, I mean, that is when you get your porch furniture, your...
Maybe a concrete bench, but not a...
I mean, that was the other thing, I was just, I was just starting to go there on stone, so I was just starting to go there with the fountain and maybe this bench, maybe it's, maybe you have to, maybe you have to limit them to materials, landscape ornamentation of, that's fixtures or made of a stone material.
A natural material.
Natural.
A natural or composite.
Natural could include a wooden bench.
A natural material.
Natural could include a teak bench or a teak dining sat.
That's right. So you're going to work on that.
I think we're working on it right now, Alex.
What about things like, you know, a trellis? Is that, is something included as fencing?
Trellis would be fencing, right?
Okay. So there are, like...
Although, is that even in here?
Fencing is not in there.
Steel fire pit.
Fencing is not allowed on here? Steel fire pit isn't movable, as opposed to a one that's built with stone?
I don't...
So then, so then we go back to the fixed versus movable.
Once you put it in, it's not moving. But is it, can I, can I pick it up and put it in my truck?
Can you say immobile? Fixed immobile? I mean, it seems to be saying the same thing, but, you know, fixed is something I could stab in the ground and say, it's fixed there, but it's, but that would be mobile, because I could just take it on board.
You could say stone or concrete, that would limit things a little bit.
Stone or concrete landscape ornamentations. Fixed stone or concrete landscape ornamentations.
I might suggest putting metal in there as well.
Except metals has...
A flow of fallen chairs.
You can't, you can't, that's your...
Aluminum chairs, aluminum, you know...
Don't you have a, don't you have a steel ornamentation in your, to the radio driveway?
I don't like to do ornamentation on work.
No, it's supposedly brass.
No, ornamentation is the real problem, because ornamentation becomes decorative.
It is metal. It may be a sign, but that's another discussion.
You put a size on it, so it's something that's of more substantial size.
That's what I'm trying to do by...
Or weight, like you were saying.
Thinking weight, yeah.
But I think size too, because if you need a truck to deliver it, if you need equipment to install it, I mean, that starts to become something that's different than the flamingo, I think, that was mentioned at one meeting.
Yeah.
I don't pick up a steel, I don't pick up a steel fire pit and put it in the backseat of my car.
So it requires a bobcat or...
You can pick it up in your pickup, but you can't pick it up in, in your wagon.
I like, I like my immobile, because if you have a steel fire pit, I know what you're saying, but you still can move it. If I put in a stone fire pit in the patio...
Well, that's a fixture.
You could, you could move it, but it's, it'd take an awful lot.
So did you want to think about landscape fixtures and study ornamentations?
Let's just say fixtures, and then they can put the, they can put a concrete, they can, you know, put a concrete base and then a layer of adhesive, and then it becomes a fixture.
All right, so that it becomes...
It's a defined real estate term, it's something that I think the building inspector can rely on and interpret.
That's replacing the word ornamentations with fixtures.
So and, it would be, and landscape fixtures needed to implement a specific landscape design.
So striking the word fix and putting, and then replacing ornamentations with fixtures.
With fixtures, yep.
There's going to be gray area, but it's limiting the gray, it's limiting the gray area substantially.
Still like my immobile fixture.
Well, we'll keep that under advisement, Mike, it's a good one. So, all right, four. No business activities or sales other than those identified in three above are authorized by the special permit. So we had looked at saying, well, this thing is authorized by that special permit, and that thing is authorized by that other special permit, and you were all concerned about naming specific authorized activities. So this says, this sort of does it in the negative, it says, here's what we've defined in three, that's all we're authorizing, we're not authorizing anything else, that's it. So it's belt and suspenders, but...
But...
Yes?
If there's an involvement with a nursery use, then if we don't allow it, the nursery use gets blown out of the water.
We're not.
In other words, they can't sell mulch to their...
We've just told them they can sell mulch, it's up here.
Isn't that...
In three, we say that they can sell mulch.
And a nursery can sell mulch too, isn't it?
That's under the nursery.
Isn't? Don't you see that there is a similarity of...
I see that there's a similarity, I don't...
I see the point, I think the concern, I think where Alex is, is this where you're going, is, do they have to have separate mulch bins for the nursery landscaping?
We've limited the quantity of the mulch that they can have on site.
I understand, but from the standpoint of Alex's point, we don't want to end up in a situation here where they use the same bin to service the nursery and the landscaping business, and suddenly we've aggregated the businesses and...
So how do you want to deal with that?
Well, I think that if you're saying with this materials limit...
Yeah.
That it's only for the landscaping business, you're...
Yeah, that's total materials limit.
Well, okay, so...
That's, that's all they get to have on site, or either in the year, rather.
That has to be clear later then, right?
Yep, and we'll make sure, when we get there, it's clear.
The, the materials are going to be handled because of this commonality...
Yeah.
...in accordance with the procedures that we establish here.
Agreed.
All the materials are going to be handled that way.
Yeah.
All right.
I agree, yeah. I don't have, I don't have, I'm just saying that they can't sell, we've said that they can sell these things, we are not authorizing any other sales. They may have sales that they can do, like, for example, Christmas trees, under the nursery, but we are not authorizing those sales under the special permit. That's all I'm trying to say.
That's right where I went with number four, Christmas trees.
Yeah, and if this language doesn't make that clear, then we need to figure out another way, but I tried it the other way first and got pushback that that's not how you want to do it, so this is the two.
I think, I think what you said, by this special permit, that's...
Yeah.
I think it's, yeah, I agree, I think, I think this language is fine, but you just said something else that was intriguing, and that's just the idea that this is all the material they can have on site.
I mean, not on site, I meant to say annually, that was a slip of the tongue.
That's fine, annually, but how, how can we say that?
We'll get there, I'm thinking as you said we get...
We've got that in there.
It goes further.
But we're not enforcing those other uses.
Well, we haven't done...
But they have, they have told us what their 2012 levels are for materials on site.
Not for landscaping.
No, that's for the whole thing, that's what, that's what we asked them for.
So we, I think we probably have to add a little bit in.
We have to just tweak that.
Yeah, that's fine, absolutely.
Exclusive of other businesses.
Yes.
Inclusive.
Inclusive.
Other businesses, this is the top.
This is all you get to buy for both businesses.
I would suggest, under number four, that they can sell landscaping services.
You mean under number three?
No, we said four.
They can sell landscaping, landscaping services might be a good thing.
It might be, yeah. That's their business.
Might, you know, nice, why don't we make that A and then we'll bump everything else down, so...
Yep.
Don't the, are those business activities in the zoning?
No, they can do it.
Well, it says that it's a business concern that operates to construct, install, and maintains longs, trees, yards, shrubs, gardens, patios, related grounds, and other outdoor areas owned by other, but Alex has a valid point that we should in fact say that they can sell those sort of things.
Landscaping installations and services.
Yeah.
Why do we need number four?
Hang on, I'm writing.
I think you explained that was a, that was a, I was going to say a double negative or something, but it's a...
Belt and suspenders, that's what I said.
Yeah, no, you said that, now I was trying to figure out a different way to say it, but it's just to say that this, this is all where, under this special permit.
If you think it's too much, if you think three is clear enough, it's fine.
Well, I'm concerned about what Alex just raised. I don't want to get in a situation where somebody says that the landscaping and the nursery businesses are happening at the same, are being commingled, and therefore the landscaping regulations apply. And now our special permit for landscaping says, as Alex pointed out, you can't have a nursery, you can't have anything but landscaping.
No, that's not what it says. All it says is that this special permit is only authorizing the things above. So I'm saying anything about any of the other businesses and we've said, now, think about it over, you know, between now and the next meeting, and if we still have issues, we can come back and revisit it, I don't have a problem with that.
But this, if there's any involvement between the landscaping services and the nursery uses, then if it's not covered in this permit, it's not covered. And then the nursery is out of luck.
No?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
No, because the involvement includes things like operations, and maybe that's what we should make clear when we talk about involvement, is that it's the operations, the involvement is the operations of the two businesses. So things like storage of mulch, storage of fertilizer, how the trucks move around on the site, this special permit governs all of that, whether it's nursery or landscaping.
Contrary to what you said, this says, loading and use of noisy equipment for the landscaping business is not allowed on Sunday.
Yes.
But they can take a piece of equipment and load me a bucket of mulch in the back of my truck on Sunday.
Yes, and in fact...
That's, that's, that, I believe is true, but what Alex was just saying is, if we don't cover it in here, then they can't do it in the nursery. I think they can do it on the nursery.
Well, that brings us actually to number five, so let's segue to that and then use it, because number five is the landscaping business hours. If you remember, in the special permit, it allows us to limit the nursery loading and use of noisy equipment on Sundays to 10 to 3:00. And that had been in the order, draft order of conditions that we've been looking at, some pushback saying, we don't want to touch nursery, so I've taken it out and I've only had the landscaping business hours in here. Now, the special, the decision in 2001 defines specific hours that they can use. I guess the question, and you can see that in the red text there, is how do you want to deal with that 10 to 3:00 of nursery?
On Sunday.
On Sunday. Do you want to include it in the special permit? Do you want to include the other nursery hours in the special permit, or do you just want to have the landscaping hours only?
Landscape, that's it.
And the special permit deals with the nursery hours.
How are you going to determine this?
What do you mean?
I mean, it's fine.
Designated the vehicles.
If you say it, if you say it, and how's the building inspector going to figure this out?
In the reality is, the building inspector's not going to be there on Sunday anyway, but the, we've designated that there's two vehicles that can be used. I've added language to say that they have to be inscribed or engraved in such a way that it makes clear that, you know, vehicle one and two are being used for those purposes. If you get a picture...
Exclusively for the landscaping purposes.
Exclusively for the landscaping purposes.
What happens if vehicle two breaks down?
Well, then you're going to have to get it fixed.
And so the building is...
Bobcats, one and two identified as such in Article 4.5 is the only bobcats allowed to operate on Sundays.
Why can't you just say, no more than two vehicles can operate on Sundays?
That's another option, is you could say that only two vehicles at any given time can operate.
Now you're regulating more than the landscaping use with this permit if you do that.
Yeah, but that's because there's an involvement between the two, and the zoning says you can regulate them. But if you look at the, what the, the bobcats, look at the bobcats, the use of the bobcats, four and five.
Four and five, yeah.
The nursery bobcats and the landscaping bobcats have an exactly similar description of vehicle use.
Yep, as do the...
I would, I would suggest that there was, there would seem to be a overlap.
There's also nursery trailer one has pickup and delivery of plant material, and landscaping trailer two just delivers plant material.
In any event, since we're limiting these, all these vehicles, whatever they're used for, as being the vehicles that can be used on the site.
So no matter what or any number of bobcats they use on Sunday, the worst they could use them is between 10 and 2:00.
If we put 10 and, yeah, 10 and 3:00 actually.
Not relative to what we're doing, relative to the special permit that already exists.
No, the special permit allows it to run Sundays 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Oh.
So if we limit the nursery, we're creating a, we're using the special permit zoning under three N to create an additional limitation for the nurseries on Sundays. Right now, they have 9 to 6:00, so, for bobcat use. So the question is, do we leave it as 9 to 6:00, or do we limit it to 10 to 3:00?
We're back to hours again, sorry.
We're back to hours again.
Still on vehicles.
Well, they're kind of related.
If you play with the vehicle issue for one second, say they get a new bobcat, you realistically want that new bobcat to work at the nursery, but if you're replacing the landscape bobcat, you're out of luck, because the new one's going to be a lot quieter than the older one. So realistically, you want no more than two bobcats, so that when the first one goes down, you know that from now on, they'll be getting the new one at the nursery.
Well, you want it used for both, so that is really quiet.
There's no reason they can't re-identify the vehicles with a can of spray paint. I mean, the way I have this written under rules for vehicles on, I don't know what page it is in this, in this version, but I...
Got a page number.
It's page...
I hear you with the numbers, but they can only run two at any one time. You cannot have three of them going.
Why, at 3:00 on, or 2:00 on a Friday afternoon, why not? You have landscaping and nursery business going at the same time.
Not on a weekend, a weekend...
On a weekend, I agree with, so my point is, I, under rules for vehicles, I have bobcats three and four identified as such in 4.4, the only bobcats allowed to operate such in 4.4, the only bobcats allowed to operate on Sundays. Bobcat three and four will be engraved or otherwise permanently identified, visible to passersbyers. Well, you can do one and two as well, but all bobcats will be engraved or otherwise permanently identified, visible to passersbyers, identifying them as such. You're limited to two vehicles. I know it's complicated, but I'm, I'm very much in favor of having this be a landscaping permit. I would prefer not to co-mingle the two. That's my opinion.
And you have to have a nursery operator in your nursery bobcat and a landscaper operator in your landscape bobcat, under your viewpoint. In my viewpoint, you can have, you can use the bobcat in either operation, as it will obviously be used and operated by either a nursery or a landscape employee, as in fact, whoever's available will load the truck. And if it's a load of mulch for a customer down the street, then it's a nursery load. And if it actually is going to a landscape job, then it'll be a landscaping job. But they're not gonna say, hold everything, get the, get...
But maybe they should have to. We're trying to create an enforceable document. I don't know how you do, I don't know how you...
That is totally, what you're suggesting is unenforceable.
10 to 3:00 on Sunday.
You think the, you think the building inspector's gonna go out and look and see what bobcat is doing what?
I think we should add it. I think it should be added. If we, if we add 10 to 3:00 here, you're telling me that further restricts, it takes precedence over the 9 to 6:00?
If with, yeah, it's, hang on, it's E., let me find out which E.? Should be 7E, 7E. There shall be no loading or use of noisy equipment on Sundays, provided that use of equipment for the loading of plant and nursery materials, which are not sold as part of landscaping services, shall be permissible between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. on Sundays.
I think we should add that in here. And that will take precedence, you're telling me, over the 9 to 6:00 of the special permit?
It should do.
Then I think we should add that.
There should be a court case on it, I suppose, but it should do.
So, wait, I want to try and understand. If this says not allowed here, then under the...
I was saying...
Under the Board of Appeals, then they're still allowed on the nursery side to do the hours that are allowed under that permit, is that right? Or is this saying not allowed at all? How can we dictate what's already allowed under a different permit?
The stuff in green refers to the landscaping business. We can totally dictate that.
Yes.
That is our right. The question becomes the nursery. Our zoning says 10 to 3:00. The ZBA's decision, the 2001 decision, which was as a result, which is being appealed, by the way, says Sundays 9:00 a.m. to 6:00. So...
But that's for nursery business.
Well, actually, that's for everything. Where our precedent for landscaping takes precedence over that.
So I think that 10 to 3:00 should be here. The reason being, and I understand all the conversation that's going on, and I virtually agree with both sides, but it does become, you know, the, my, beyond what we discussed already, example is, all right, it's Sunday. Is it landscaping, landscaping or nursery? Well, there's another landscaper that's coming in to pick up a load of mulch. That's nursery business. Not my landscape business.
Right.
I agree with that.
So now it's totally out of the water. So, the only way we can put any teeth in the, like you say, for the building inspector ending is 10 to 3:00. Now it's 4:00, there's all kind of equipment going off, can't do it. Simple.
Right.
And we can do it because the zoning says we can do it.
I'm trying to sleep on Sunday, equipment go, can't do it.
Right.
So, we're spending a lot of time on vehicles, but right now, we're just, we should be probably just at least nailing down the hours, because I don't, we have agreement on that.
So, just so you know, on Monday to Friday, I used the earlier hour that you guys had suggested, but I kept the later hour for Saturday. So Monday to Friday at 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Saturday, it's 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., which is what you had wanted to do. Deliveries stay, they are what they are, emptying the dumpster is what they do.
Deliveries are deliveries in and deliveries out, and I think that they've got to be, they've got to be described. And emptying the dumpster, what about delivering the dumpster?
I don't know that it's delivery.
I don't think we should deliver deliveries from 9 to 2:00.
You don't, you don't?
Monday through Friday. Not, deliveries in, yes.
But not deliveries out?
I think we need to, I agree, I think we need to...
Deliveries out are, and the wood operation needs...
I think we need to add it to be clear.
You've got to address that, because most of the, an awful lot of the trucks are going to be carrying wood out.
So are you, what's, what, are you suggesting different...
I'm suggesting that there should be a provision for, about the wood operation.
So then my question becomes, do you want those hours to be diff, the delivery of wood to be different hours from any other delivery? And if so, what hours would you want? Because right now, there would be a delivery.
I thought, I thought they had specified when, about, when the wood would come in.
I think we need in and out.
In's fine, 9 to 2:00.
Okay.
Out...
So what do you want to do for out?
8 to 4:00. You gotta get in the morning to...
My opinion is that out should really be, so it should be the same as the landscaping business. That's my opinion.
Well, I think that the wood operation, if the wood is ordered, they should make it a practice, and it should be a rule in their rulebook, which we haven't seen yet, or we haven't prepared yet. But we will. That they will do everything humanly possible to deliver the wood out between the same hours as it comes in.
So you're saying 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. You would deliver wood out?
Monday through Friday. And, and I know that they, they say that there are special circumstances, and...
I'm not on board with the special circumstances, but we're not at that section yet.
You just, you just, in and out is good, but...
I don't, I think we did a whole section on the log for special exceptions.
What were the requested hours for these? What we have here is the green, in green is...
So the requested hours were 7 at 4:00, and this is the loading and use of noisy equipment. The requested hours were 7 to 6:00 and 8 to 5:00 on Saturday.
Okay. And then deliveries?
The deliveries are the deliveries.
Are these the requested?
No, the zoning doesn't give an option on deliveries?
That's deliveries in.
That's deliveries in, is what you're saying, the 9 to...
The zoning does not specify between in and out.
I see. All right, so what we're saying is that the deliveries in are the 9 to 2:00? Can we add deliveries out?
I am looking.
That's, that's...
Well, so it says on onsite, this is 7E again, onsite traffic loading and deliveries. It says, deliveries to the business, to the business premises shall be scheduled so as to occur on weekdays between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m., and the operator shall take reasonable steps to assure compliance. We do not have any specifications on delivery out. It doesn't say that we can, and it does not say that we can't. You see what I mean? It doesn't, it doesn't give us a limitation on that.
But of course we can.
Well, yeah.
All I was thinking is...
It doesn't say we can't, so I think we can.
It doesn't, it doesn't give a positive or a negative.
Trying, all I was thinking was, no, I, and I know you said just, or the landscaping hours out, but I was just thinking...
I'm okay with limiting the wood hours, by the way.
But if you, if you say, I can make a delivery at 7:00 o'clock in the morning, you know, I kind of try to put things in a practical sense. That means there's guys there at quarter of 6:00 loading trucks and moving things around so they can get out of there at 7:00.
So there's a, just so you guys know, there's a...
That means that they're limited, that they can't do that.
But they're not allowed to do that.
So just so you know, Alex...
It should.
There is a specification above that, that says enforceable procedures shall be specified for trucks making deliveries and for the onsite operation of the trucks and other equipment used in the business. That does not limit the deliveries for in or out. So I would say that we can make...
Of course we can.
A limitation.
And we can say you can't load them up at quarter of 6:00, and...
So what do you want to do?
I, I think that I want a definition of noisy equipment, because all equipment is noisy. And I want a definition that the building inspector can say, this is noisy equipment, this is not noisy equipment.
I thought we already got to that point, and the building inspector said he's not getting a noise beater, so he's ain't gonna...
Well, all right, then why...
He can know that noisy equipment is a bobcat and a chainsaw and a leaf blower and all of those.
I think that's fine. If, I mean, if that's what we want to say, bobcats, chainsaws, leaf blowers, generators...
That's all, why can't you just say landscaping business?
Well, that's what we did say.
Loading for landscaping business, take out use of noise equipment.
Why is there anybody doing anything before 7:00 a.m.? They're not open yet.
That's true.
Right.
They don't know, the sales office doesn't open until 7:00. The landscaping doesn't open so...
Well, because of Sunday, it's not allowed at all.
Well, that's fair.
The sales office is open on Sunday, but we were saying that they can't do loading or, loading or unloading, landscaping business.
Just the landscaping business.
All loading or unloading.
You've got, you've got a little problem here, in that you're saying that you can do certain nursery operations independently, and we're not controlling them, except certain nursery operations we are controlling.
And that's what I'm trying to not do.
Well, I understand that, but if we don't control nursery operations, we might as well just give up right now. Because we're never going to come up with a permit that is enforceable in any reasonable manner.
Where are we missing the boat? We just, we decided, or some of us decided, or we thought we'd add, loading and use of noisy equipment slash landscaping business on Sunday from 10 to 3:00.
No, 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 we can't do landscaping business. It's nursery 10 to 3:00. Sunday 10 to 3:00. It's prohibited on Sunday by the zoning.
I'm agreeing with you in an indirect way. It says loading and use of noisy equipment.
Right.
Dash landscaping business. I don't, I don't think it necessarily...
Oh, because, because it was loading and use of noisy equipment dash landscaping, loading and use of noisy equipment dash nursery. So the nursery part, port, part is what is allowed from 10 to 3:00 under our zoning.
Well, then get rid of landscaping business, and put loading and use of noisy equipment 10 to 3:00.
But then you're now allowing both the landscaping and the nursery to operate from 10 to 3:00 on Sunday, is that your intent? But the zoning specifically prohibits the landscaping from operating on Sunday.
Well, we gotta put another line in then.
Yeah, that's what we'd have to do.
Isn't the zoning?
No, another line in here. Timetable.
All right.
So you can point, leave the line loading and use of noisy equipment on Sunday 10 to 3:00, and then add another line landscaping business on Sunday not allowed.
Okay. All right. So, we have one wanting to add the nursery, we have at least one who doesn't want to add the nursery.
There's still ambiguity that's gonna happen, but at least you can say, you can't do anything before 10:00.
Or after 3:00.
We can start saying, if you got five guys and they're jumping on the back of a truck, jeez, that sure looks like landscaping business, but...
What do you want to be doing about deliveries out?
I think the building inspector's gonna do that.
No, I don't. But I think he can get a call and say, they're out, they're out there right now at 9:00 o'clock, tell them to stop.
Okay.
What if one of them wants to cut their lawn on Sunday?
What? I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
What if one of them wants to cut their lawn on Sunday?
We're not, we're not regulating those.
Is that a nursery business?
Residential use.
It's a residential use.
Isn't it?
Not if it's their own lawn.
Oh, if you're, if they're mowing their own lawn, that's not a landscaping use.
We're not taking care of 25, isn't that, the house is 24?
That's, that's cut out.
I know at 8:00, but...
Part of the land carry yard goes, goes over the 24 Forest Street lot line. So yes, it's included in the business. Had a look at the assessor's lots. So...
If you've got landscaping vehicles going in and out...
Yes.
I don't, I think having, I'm gonna accept wood for a minute.
Okay.
So accepting wood for a minute. If you have landscaping vehicles going in and out from 7:00 to 6:00 and 9:00 to 5:00, I think you could have deliveries going out during that time as well, because I think for the most part, it's the same vehicles.
Right. But they can't load them before 7:00?
Right, they're not open.
Which is, you know, if, if you're going to have your...
Say that, didn't it?
Yes, no, no, but I'm just clarifying so that we all understand.
It does, it does.
That if your vehicle is leaving at, precisely at 7:00 a.m. in the morning...
You gotta load it at 4:00 tomorrow, last night, yesterday.
Yes, you load it at the previous night. Okay.
I, you know, it does.
All right.
Just being in construction, I'm just thinking the practicality of it. I want you, I want you leave, I want you out of here by 5 past 7:00.
Okay.
Why were you in here at 6:00? You told me you had to be out by 5 past 7:00, had to put the stuff in the truck.
So then let me clarify that deliveries in to the site will be from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Not allow, on Monday through Friday. Deliveries out will be not allowed on Saturday, I mean, deliveries in will not be allowed on Saturday and Sunday. Deliveries out will be the same hours as loading and use of noisy equipment for the landscape business. So they'll be allowed out 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Saturday, and not allowed at all on Sunday. Is that what you're proposing?
So they're gonna, yeah, that makes sense.
All right.
And then we have to talk about the firewood.
Okay, now do we want to do the wood operation the same as other deliveries?
Why doesn't the wood just fall under the same delivery?
It does. Alex suggested that he wanted to potentially limit it.
So Alex...
That gets into the pot of what, the argument that Alex is making sometimes. What am I gonna say? Lift up that thing. There's any wood in it.
I mean, I'm fine with it saying the way that I'm just...
Who's gonna do that?
So Alex, what do you want to do about the deliveries out?
I want there to be a provision for the wood operation.
Okay, what hours do you want?
I want to hear other people's, I, I want suggestions, actually, is what I want. I want to know what the applicant suggested. I have to go and look at, no, I, I, that was rhetorical.
Yes.
But I, you know, if I knew that I was going to be asked what the wood operation hours should be, I would have gone back and looked to see what the applicant suggested. And I don't remember what it is, so I don't have an immediate suggestion now, but I do want hours for the wood operation specified.
All right, so I'm going to put a line into the special permit. I will put in, what I'll do for now is I will put it the same as the deliveries out for the other time, but then I will also go back and look and see if we had any other information on that. All right. So the next section, three, site plan approval, this is just...
I would get rid of number four, as suggested. I don't see any reason for it.
Number four?
No business activity.
Oh, the business, I'm sorry, I was looking at the next four.
I agree with you.
You're done, then, that's fine. I put it in for your review. All right, three, Roman numeral three, sorry, site plan approval, this is boilerplate language. Number four, zoning compliance and special permit requirements. The first thing under here is the purpose. And so I want to draw your attention to the zoning itself. It says the purpose of this subsection, this is one purpose under 3N. The purpose of this subsection is to permit the ongoing operations of landscaping businesses. And there's a couple of qualifications it needs to meet. First, it has to be an operation on July 2012, which is fine, we've got that. It has to have existed on lots, or on lots for at least one of which a special permit pursuant to Section 3A4 and/or 6 or use variance was enforced on July 2012. So I want to talk about that in a moment, and then the rest of purpose is actually what we've been trying to do. The subsection is intended to make the physical layout and day-to-day operations of each such landscaping business reasonably compatible with the interests of a butters and nearby residents and their rights to reasonable quiet and enjoyment of their properties. The subsection is intended to provide and require enforceable specifics for the layout and operations of each such landscaping business in order to control dust, noise, light, and odor, to promote safety, to reduce inconvenience to neighboring residents, and to establish reasonable limits on the amount of infrastructure, equipment, and operations. So that is obviously what we've been trying to do.
That, that's the, um...
That is the zoning. That is the zoning.
Would there be anything wrong with just placing that right in there?
Yes.
Under purpose?
The, that part, that section part, we could put it right there in purpose if you want to. I have, obviously changing it to this subsection to be this special permit. But I want to bring your attention to something else, and it's also under the, the first paragraph. We don't have a problem with the landscaping business being an operation in 2012. We do have a question that has been raised about the special permit pursuant to Sections 3A4 and/or 6 or use variance enforced on July 2012. Thayer Nursery does not have any use variances, so that rules that one out. 3A4 and/or 6 in your zoning, that refers to the specific zoning sections. 3A4 is actually allowed by right. You don't need special permits to, to do the uses that are in 3A4. 3A6 refers to accessory uses to something that is allowed by right. Actually, I'm gonna read 3A4. So 3A is residence, double A, A, B, and C district uses. 3A4, I won't read all of the language, because you've heard enough of me reading, but 3A4A regard, refers to agricultural, horticultural, floricultural use. B is on the five acres or less, that came in later as an amendment. Both of those are as of right uses and don't require a special permit. 6 is an accessory use on the same lot, which is either customarily incident to any of the above permitted uses, which is one through five, or to the uses permitted in accordance with subsection seven, and that aren't detrimental to a residential neighborhood. 6, again, is an as of right use, you do not need a special permit for 6. The special permit that the applicants have is under 7D, 3A7D, and that is the one that says a parcel of five acres or less, a greenhouse or nursery selling only produce raised on the premises, provided however that greenhouses and nurseries in single residence districts shall be permitted to sell only during the Christmas season, cut trees, Christmas trees, boughs, holly, and wreaths grown or fabricated elsewhere than on the premises. So what I am doing is I am letting you know that a question has arisen on this purpose, and also on that first preamble, that says that the applicant must, or the lot or lots must have a special permit pursuant to 3A4 and/or 6, and that in fact neither 3A4 nor 3A6 require a special permit. So you cannot in fact have a special permit for either of those. And I need to bring that to your attention to see if you wish to discuss it, and how you wish to discuss it, and what you want to do with it. I have been in contact with town council to discuss this and see the level of importance we need to give to it, and he's given me some options we can discuss, but I'd be interested in hearing any reaction from the board first.
I'll give you my reaction.
Yes.
I've written it down. Everyone knows that section three, subsection N, was intended to apply to Thayer Nursery. There was some poor draftsmanship in the article, as a result of which some might claim that the article was a totally meaningless exercise, since it had no potential application to anyone. Legislation is usually not interpreted so as to be meaningless. Fortunately, such an interpretation is not necessary. Section N has a saving provision through the reference to section 3A6, which concerns accessory uses. The existing Thayer 1967 and 1987 special permits specifically reference disallowance of a number of accessory uses. For example, the prohibition of parking on Hillside Street and Forest Street, the requirements for mufflers on Bobcats and restrictions on their use, the prohibition of floodlights, and the restrictions on power washing of trucks. In the 1987 decision, the Board of Appeals specifically references 3A6, and reserved the right for further action under section 3A6. Since the permit in fact addresses a number of accessory uses which are controlled by section 3A6, it seems clear that the permit was issued in part pursuant to section 3A6. This meets the specific requirements of the zoning, especially since the intent of the zoning enactment is so unmistakably clear, i.e., to permit Thayer to apply for a permit. An unduly literal approach, which pays no attention to the purpose of the zoning, and disregards the applicability of the permits to accessory uses, must be avoided. The zoning may be badly written, but it is good enough to qualify Thayer as an applicant for a landscape and business permit. The planning board should proceed on this basis.
I disagree with that.
Well.
Or I would not have brought it up.
Your legal opinion is worth something. My legal opinion is contrary to your legal opinion.
My opinion as a member of the planning board who has reviewed the zoning, and who has reviewed both the special permits and the decision, I do not see, in the actual special permit granted by the boards, by the zoning board of appeals, I do not see a reference to 3A6. I bring it to your attention because it was brought to my attention, and it is unfair for me to withhold information from the board that may affect your decision as you move through this, Brian.
I just, for the record, also spoke to town council about this issue, having seen it raised in the first draft that we've reviewed, I practically speaking have some serious concerns about this, because I think in addition to drafting an enforceable bylaw, or excuse me, enforceable special permit, I think we want to also be very careful to draft a special permit that will be able to withstand an appeal. And I'm very concerned that if this thing goes into an appeal situation, this specific issue with the zoning drafting could potentially make the appeal last a lot longer than a simple appeal of a typical decision. You know, practically, with that in mind, and as I discussed with town council today, you know, an appeal with teeth could go on for years. A denial of this special permit, which is very much not in keeping with where I, where my head is at, would allow the applicant to come back if town meeting were to correct this, either in a special town meeting or at the May town meeting. That would be a substantial enough change that they could come back immediately to apply, and certainly there's been enough work and enough review of this permit that the approval could be given quickly. So from a practical standpoint, I'm concerned that we could actually be doing a disservice to the applicant by overlooking this.
If we, if we follow that process that you just described, does it open up to public meeting again? They reapply, it's a new application?
So we had, this actually came up earlier in a discussion about the Hendries project. If you remember, they'd gone for the 40B, and then there was some discussion back and forth as to whether or not they would come back to us for a special permit for the mixed use. And I had said at the time, one of the members of the Board of Selectmen had been working on those discussions, and I'd said at the time, look, if they come in with a complete application, we do the application review, I will be happy to hold a public hearing, all of the issues have already gone through, I'll be happy to hold a one-night public hearing, and we can go from there. I mean, the, the work that we've done now would get us to a substantial draft, yes, we would have to hold another, there would have to be another application. So the, what the process would be is there would be either a special town, a special town meeting, or an annual town meeting, the zoning would get corrected. Then we would have the, a new application, which would be substantially based on the old one.
Quick, could that application actually include the special permit draft?
Yeah, I don't see why not.
Okay.
I mean, that would be fair enough. We'd have, we would have a public hearing, it would be reopened to the public for comment, and actually, in some ways, that'd be good, because the public would have the draft in front of them, and you could comment directly on that, and then we could do it in one, maybe two nights at most, but I would say one night.
Would that be grounds for an appeal? I mean-
Of course it could be an appeal.
Everything would be appealed, yes.
No, 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 I know, of course, but I mean, realistic.
Yeah.
You know, here, you submitted an application, went through it for a year, now you're gonna tell me you're gonna submit a similar application, you're gonna go through it one night?
So the-
I mean, you and I know the understanding behind it, but still, there's the public that says that this is a different application now. It should, it should merit the same time and scrutiny that the other one did.
Having said that, there are, there are many towns who go through their special permit applications a lot faster than a year, but that's neither here nor there. The fact of changing the zoning would allow, so normally if we denied a special permit for many applicant, there would be a two-year waiting period before they could reapply, but if the town meeting voted to change the zoning, that would open up the ability to reapply earlier based on the fact that the zoning was materially changed. So if, if in our opinion, this is a material change, and this is a direction that we want to go to, I did, because that is, having a special town meeting is one of our options, I did take the precaution of putting myself on the selectman's agenda for Monday night to request a special town meeting, if that is the direction the board would go in, because it makes it a lot faster process, the faster I get in front of the Board of Selectmen.
Would that be for this coming town meeting?
No, it's too late, it was, unfortunately, it was too late when we, when this was brought to my attention, to put a special town meeting within the town meeting, because of the noticing requirements for a special town meeting. So my guess is the earliest it would be, given the holidays, is January. So, Brian?
This is a question you may not be able to answer on process, but is there an ability to reference public record from a previous application in any application?
I think we probably could, so that we could refer to the, the materials that had already been submitted. Certainly when we reopened the public hearing, they submitted for, in March, they submitted a new application, and we referred to the previous public hearing, we just sort of said, look, we'll take everything that was there. If there's been a several month period in between, I'm not sure that we could do that in quite the same way. But the fact that we would have a draft special permit that the public could specifically comment on, again, one, maybe two nights, I don't think we would have to, to spend that same amount of time.
I assume all the same material could be submitted on a sit-down basis.
They could submit all the same material, yeah, absolutely. And the updated plans that they would have to do anyway. So.
I think what Alex described earlier, I think, I mean, to take it to an extreme, just to make my point, I mean, if we spelled something wrong in it, to say, well, you can't give them a permit, then because you spelled it wrong, you're weighing that against the entire intent of something, I, I think that's, and I think, you know, like the Constitution, expedient trial, I mean, I think the applicant should have the ability to have some input here, because, I mean, they're just asking for a decision.
If I had thought it was at the level of the typo, I wouldn't have mentioned it. I thought it was substantial enough to bring to the board's attention.
I think the, I think the intent of the-
Yeah, the intent is certainly something that's out there.
Significantly.
Yeah.
My concern on, sorry, Alex, my intent on, my concern about intent on, in the matter is, the, the court could very well side with the intent and go forward with that. If it does not, it could take three years to get to that decision, and if the court overrules the, the, the permit, there's still two more years on top of that, they have to wait to refile.
Alex?
I would point out that if this goes to another town meeting, if we tell Thayer, go make business plans, alternative business plans for the next X amount of time, to conduct your landscape business someplace other than your nursery yard, and this has to go probably to the annual town meeting, and then it goes to the attorney general for approval, which takes three or four months, and then they have to file an application, and I certainly, I mean, I'm not going to hash out a special permit if it's for nothing, just for their application. We've begun to discuss this special permit, but we've gotten, haven't gotten into any of the so-called conditions yet, and there are plenty of comments I have on those. So there is hardly anything that could be attached to a special permit application. People will have a right to comment, and then we'll be back where we are, probably a year from now, and I think that Thayer can't wait that, that sort of time. And even if it did, once we issue the permit, it still can be appealed, and I personally think that this is not a very good appellate issue for someone challenging the permit. It is, it's an issue, it's an arguable issue. And certainly, if Thayer were asked whether or not they were willing to take the chance, fine, ask them. But I was involved in this zoning, and I know what the intent was, and I am very comfortable with the fact that it is partially based on the accessory uses, the disallowance of accessory uses. It's, in my view, it's, this is something that if the board were to tell Thayer to get lost, they would be making a huge mistake, and it would be a huge disservice to the town.
I think to categorize it as telling Thayer to get lost is a mischaracterization.
I would, I would agree, there's-
Think through a scenario, if we move forward with this, and it's appealed, and it takes a year, and in the meantime, they've got their permit, and in the meantime, we amend at a future town meeting, the bylaw, then sometime thereafter, the court comes back and says, the permit's denied because of the appeal, why can't Thayer Nursery come back the next day and reappeal, uh, reapply? Why can't they?
Under the new zoning.
Under the new zoning.
That is certainly an option.
You move the target, it's a new thing, I can right back apply.
So it's, it probably doesn't-
But the, the bottom line is, it's, it's really unfair to the applicant, it's, it's like throwing a guy in jail, like, I like scenarios to make my points, but it's like throwing a guy in jail and saying, well, we're gonna give you a trial, well, when are you gonna give me the trial? Well, we'll get back to you on that.
That, that is certainly a possibility, is that you could, the, the board could rather go ahead and vote to approve the special permit, and then in the meantime, move to correct the issue. By the time an appeal comes in, if that appeal is denied, or if that appeal is upheld and Thayer's permit is denied, they would be able to come in because it was new zoning, or corrected zoning, and reapply, that would certainly be an option.
I think that makes good sense.
Yeah, that's the best option.
For the reasons that people have discussed. The purpose, I think, and intent was pretty clear at town meeting, there was overwhelming support, but this has been raised as a potential, what I view as sort of a technical, maybe misunderstanding or mistake, but that you would just, that the impact that could have on, on the business by another year's delay would be significant, and it goes completely against the intent to have that kind of impact, I believe. So I think my suggestion is, is a very good one.
I'd like to hear from the applicant.
Yeah, does everybody else wish to hear from the applicant?
Yes.
That's Ned, could you, you come forward, or you and Josh and Maggie come forward?
Thank you, Ned Corcoran, on behalf of the applicants with Josh and Maggie Oldfield, I agree, four square A with everything that Alex just said. There's no question there's gonna be an appeal of this permit, there's already been an appeal of the town meeting action to establish the bylaw. There have been appeals of every, every permit, every decision, both ways, there'll be more appeals. So it's an issue of appeal, and it is clearly arguable enough that it is a winnable argument on appeal, just as it may be a loseable argument on appeal. I think the board would do an extraordinary disservice to the town. It'd slap town meeting in the face if it was to decide on a technical issue that it didn't have the authority to issue this permit. I think the clear and best approach is what Mike suggested, and what Cheryl has agreed is to go forward if the board is inclined to finish the negotiations on the special permit, and grant the permit, and allow the process to unfold, the town meeting to, to correct. There may be other issues in this permit that get raised on appeal, that ought also to be corrected, because the clear, at the end of the day, the clear intent of town meeting was to allow this oper, this business to operate. They wanted it to operate and behave, and have stricter guidelines about how they were operating, but the clear intent, overwhelming intent, I, I said it early on, a thousand to three, you know, you needed a two-thirds vote, and it is highly unusual, as Brian Walsh said, for there not to be a standing vote, if there's any voice vote for no, and there was no standing vote. I think the precinct voted loud and clear when they voted to elect Maggie as a member of town meeting, she was the highest vote getter, and they voted loud and clear not to elect Phil Johanning in that same election as a member of town meeting. There's overwhelming support, and I think the board owes the town the obligation to finish this business, to issue the permit, to establish the conditions, and if there are issues like this and others that need to be corrected, they ought to be given the opportunity to be corrected at a future town meeting. And that would correct any deficiency that might exist with respect to any appeal.
So Mike's discussion or proposal to move forward, and then at the same time, correct at a special town meeting is one that you would endorse?
Absolutely.
Do we have to make that decision right now?
No, no, not at all, because we're still going through some of the conditions, so we can, you know, we're probably, with luck, in the shop on the fifth, so, but you do not have to make that decision right now. Brian?
I just wanted to address what was, was just said, I, I just wanna make clear, first of all, I, I don't think anyone's questioning the intent, I think everyone is sitting here acknowledging it, and I think this board has worked very hard to honor that intent. So to imply otherwise, and I'm not insinuating that you did, but to imply otherwise would be a disservice to this board, I just feel like we need some basis upon which to move forward, so if we could have Alex's language reviewed by town council.
Town council has reviewed Alex's language, I gave it to him this morning.
Thank you. I would just like some sort of language to, upon which we can have something referenced about this, and-
I have an email from town council giving out the two possible options that the board could take, and the implications of both options, which I will hand out to you in a moment.
Okay.
Josh, you had your hand up?
Yes, I just have two questions.
Yeah.
First of all, why are we dealing with this now?
Yeah.
At the last minute, that's my question, number one, when obviously it was no. Number two is, is it gonna take the three-month period again from the AG's office? That's a concern.
Yeah.
And number three is, I don't know if we can afford it. So those are my three concerns, it's just frustrating as an applicant that we've gone through this whole process, and expenditure of money, imposition on us, and all the other BS that we've gone through to find out now at the 12th hour.
So that's a very valid point, I don't disagree with any of your frustration, I think it's frustrating for anybody who is put into this situation, certainly not where I would have wanted to be at this stage in the process. It's brought up now because we're at the point of the findings, I actually found out, or it was brought to my attention just before the, fairly soon before the last night of the public hearing. It is not a public hearing matter in that it is relevant to the board's own findings, it's not relevant to what you were proposing. I have been working with town council, I've actually spoken to Alex, I've spoken to Ned, back to town council, trying to figure out what the different options were, what the, what actions the board could take, and what those implications were. It didn't make sense to bring it up until I had an idea of what those were, and I have been looking at every possibility in talking to town council to see what the others are. I am deeply aware of the intent of town meeting, and in bringing this issue up, it is not my, well, it's not where I would have wanted to be with this, but I do recognize that because it's there, it, this question impacts the decision that the board has to make, and it's not- the board has to make, and it's not fair to keep it from the board. It also, of course, as with anything else that comes before, the board, it can be appealed and it impacts the appeal. And for that reason, it impacts the town. And as chair of the planning board, I have a duty to both the other members of the board and to the town as a whole to bring forward anything like this that's brought to my attention.
Yeah, I'm not questioning you.
Yeah, and I know you're not, but I just wanna make this clear. I understand it is difficult for you and that's why we brought you forward to talk with this.
Well, I think you guys have known about this. How long ago was the last public hearing? How many weeks ago?
It would be about, this is three N's, so it'd be two weeks back, four weeks back? Would be the last one? Yeah, Cheryl, I know.
So four weeks ago?
Yeah.
You knew about this?
Mm-hmm.
And when did we learn about this?
Well, I learned about it four weeks ago.
Yeah. So when did we learn about this?
When I talked to you about it.
Yes. Today.
I know.
Today.
I would just, hang on, Cheryl, she's talking.
So you have to guess what my comments would be?
Yes.
My comments would be totally X-rated at this moment at every single one of you for allowing this to happen.
You should not blame the other members of the board. They did not know until this week, when the first draft went out. The only other person that knew besides Alex, Ned, and myself, the town council, and the town administrator, because if there's any element that requires potential, that affects potential litigation, it's my duty to inform them. And I, I understand that your comments would be X-rated. I do not dispute that.
This also affects some other decisions that we have made with the town in other BS decisions by the building inspector. So we made commitments to the town in court based on this. So now what do we do?
We move forward.
Cheryl wanted to speak.
Yeah, I mean, I think I'd like to find a...
Do you agree a mistake was made?
Yeah.
And was the timing bad?
It's a mistake. It's not your mistake. We move forward.
Do we deserve to know earlier?
Oh, I can't...
I don't think it was a mistake. It was, uh...
I'm just saying, okay, should we have been known earlier that this was a problem?
I'd like to see...
All of you, hold on. Cheryl's been waiting for some time to speak. Cheryl, speak, and then let's move forward.
I, I mean, I'd just like to say, I think everyone, this I just learned about a day or two ago and been trying to understand the question and the issue. And even whether I'm allowed to deliberate...
You are allowed to deliberate. That has been confirmed, yes.
Which we did get clarification from town council on. But what I would like to say here is that what Mike has suggested, I'd like to have us agree on a path forward. We can't erase what's been done and we, we need to find a path forward. And I think what Mike's suggestion and Ned supports, I think we should talk to town council about that. And if that's not one of the options that he presented to you, ask him why that's not a good option. And then if necessary, do we need another opinion other than town council? I mean, Alex is an attorney, Ned's an attorney, they have their opinions about this. Do we need someone else's opinion? Because it has such significance. I mean, I think what's been suggested that could delay and could have significant cost to the applicant is not something we should take lightly.
Yeah.
Just like having something which might be a problem on appeal. I mean, as we understand, any decision can get appealed. So that we're going to give that more weight than the significant impact on the applicant, I don't think is right.
The, and I just, I don't know, I'm just, I don't want to waste the time, but I, I kept saying that we need to move forward relative to the applicant. It's not, it's unfair of them to just keep this going and go, and go, and go, and go. But I think, and not to jump on with their attorney, but I agree that we owe it to the town of Milton, the town of Milton, that the town meeting decided that they should have the right to apply for this permit and that we should be deliberating, voting to make a decision on whether they should get it or not. So we owe it to the people of Milton, the town of Milton, the town meeting members to make it happen. And, and it's been said by multiple people, multiple times. There's probably something else in here you could appeal on too, so...
So you're comfortable moving, yes, Ned, you want to speak? And you're comfortable moving forward, yeah?
I am, and I know we have to speak about those options.
Yes.
But to speak specifically to Cheryl's suggestion about another opinion, at the end of the day, the only, the only opinion that is going to matter is the opinion of the appeals court. Because they're gonna hear from both sides, from multiple sides, over the next several years on an appeal. So that's the, that's the only opinion that's gonna matter. It doesn't matter whether Alex, because Alex and I can be on one side agreeing, you know, we know that Butter's counsel's gonna be on another side with his own opinion. That's gonna all take time to filter through the court system. We know there's gonna be an appeal. So I think the most expeditious and the most appropriate use of available resources, including the enormous expenditure of resources that Thayer Nursery and the Oldfield family has gone through, is to finish the job. Decide on the merits of the application, whether you should grant or deny a permit. If on the merits you want to grant the permit, grant the permit with the conditions that you determine. And then it gets appealed. And whatever happens in the interim of the appeal, including moving forward with technical corrections to the zoning, can happen. And maybe obviate whatever appeal may, may happen.
To hopefully put you maybe in a better frame of mind, I think if we move forward, we make a decision, this thing should be appealed, the appeal be held up, and they deny the permit, I, I think we would owe you an expedient reapplication.
Brian, you had a comment?
Because it would be at fault of your own...
I just want a path.
Okay.
So since you have two options, I wanna hear it there.
All right. So well, our, our two options is, the first possible vote is a grant of a special permit with conditions, exactly what we've just been talking about. That is option number one. And obviously, the, if the special permit were to be appealed, the issues would include what town meeting had intended to do, clearly intended to refer to Section 3A7 rather than 3A4 or 6. And I'll give you this language, I'm paraphrasing. Second possible vote would be a denial of the application. Basis of the denial would be perhaps the, the uncertainty of 3A, the, the question that I've raised, 3A, 4, and 6. So in either event, town council says that 3N should be amended at a future town meeting. So if you want to path forward, I think the initial, I think you've got two options. You could deny it right now. I think what I'm hearing from everybody is that you're not sensing that that is fair to the applicant or to town meeting. And certainly, given the amount of time and energy the applicant has put in, we've put in, that town meeting put in, and looking at this, denial is, it's a hard vote. Your other path is, our other path as the board, is to grant the special permit and make the changes. One possibility is, is, has been presented, is that appeals take quite some time. And it may well be by the time the appeal actually even gets to the court, it's already been corrected by the special permit, and that can be noted. So you had a...
I think hearing the two options was helpful. And for me, the reason why is because I think the question has been, how does this survive? In my mind, the question has been for me, how do we create something that will have legs to withstand an appeal? Okay? By hearing your two options, what I heard in your second option was my missing piece, which is the, how does it survive an appeal in the other direction? How does this board deny a permit that would be able to sustain an appeal from the applicant to suggest that it shouldn't have been appealed? And I think the very fact that we can rely on the intent from that standpoint, knowing that the intent would be a strong defense in the applicant's favor on an appeal, that for me, gives me the path to say, you know, as much as intent is the secondary way I'd like to do this, I think the intent was clear. I think most people in this room are acknowledging that. And it gives me a great deal of comfort.
So there are four of us that would need to vote on this going forward. And what I'd like to know is if all four of you, well, all three of you plus me are comfortable moving ahead with the special permit process that we've been doing. Brian, I think you've just indicated yes. Mike, you've indicated yes. Alex, you're comfortable moving forward with the special permit?
I'm comfortable going forward with it, but I do say that the special permit will have to contain a very significant defense of our position.
Yes.
Because it has been raised and we have to be comfortable that we're going forward because, because we have the right to go forward.
That's, couldn't have said that better.
And I, and I want to clarify, again, I'm not asking whether or not you're voting in favor of the special permit, because we haven't finished going through the conditions. And as Ned pointed out, we need to make our decision on the merits of it. But I am asking if you are comfortable moving forward with the process that we've established with the special permit. All right. Then if the three of you are comfortable moving forward, then I am also comfortable moving forward with what we have now.
I have suggested language for the zoning amendment, and I specifically request that you do not ask that Section 6 be stricken from the, from subsection N, because that would undermine the process in a major way. You can simply change the one number and strike paragraph K. And that will do it. I, I've submitted language and I, I really don't have, want to see the whole thing of...
So then, when we get to that point, we'll review it and...
I understand, but if you, if you want to go over to the selectmen on Monday...
Yes.
I suggest that...
I can tell them we already have language, we'll review it, but we are ready to move forward as soon as we can.
And on the path of correcting it...
Yeah.
Is it advisable for, I guess I'll let Ned Corcoran deal with whether it's advisable for them to modify the special permit once the zoning...
Part of it is a clear mistake, just...
I agree.
The one, and, and so correcting that one number is fine, but it isn't what we're relying on.
There, fine.
So we are going to...
Well, it is in the sense that it was clearly a mistake, but...
All right. So it's 25 past 10.
Not a material mistake.
It's 25 past...
Well, we're relying on intent and then a fallback position.
Guys!
I'm listening.
Hold on. It is 25 past 10. I think you have our answer. We are moving forward with the special permit process.
Sorry about that.
Very. And then we will continue on November 5th with our deliberations. Ned will need the plans, the most up-to-date plans.
And I'm happy to discuss my specific comments, and as you can see, they are extensive, extensive on every page. Happy to discuss them. I can't write them out.
No, you don't have to write them out, but can you give them to the, can anybody with comments on this draft that is before you now, give them, whether in written or typed form, to Tim and Julia for further distribution? And that would include you and your clients as well, any comments that you have. Get them over to Tim. Two of you, please collect them and distribute them to everybody. And yes, you can comment too, just to let you know. I know that wasn't your question, but I'm just letting you know, you can...
No, I would just like to, if we're going to get revised, or the most up-to-date plans from Ned, if there were things that, about the operations, et cetera, that we, if they made sense to refer to those rather than put everything in the, in the body...
Everything either has to be in the special permit or in an appendix.
Right.
You can't refer back to the application.
Okay, so then the, the appendix, if it makes sense to put some of that in an appendix, like, as an operation...
One of the things that we did, that I prepared, were one-page written descriptive plans.
This is the restatement.
Restatement.
Yeah, we drew from that, but...
The June 15th restatement. I mean, I...
I thought that was, I thought that was the best way to be responsive to the zoning, which was you had to describe how you would mitigate noise, dust, this, how the trust would operate.
So then let's pull that in and add it in.
I mean, the only thing to be careful of is to make sure that we're not referring wholesale to a document that has, for instance, hours that have been changed.
No, I was thinking we'd pull in those paragraphs. I mean, I know we pulled in the, the provisions at various points, but I don't know that pulled in the specific paragraph, so let's have another look at that, so... All right. Next meeting, November 5th. Oh, did you want to...
I had one other agenda.
Did that make it onto the agenda?
It did.
Is it? Okay, I didn't get the, I think you probably sent it over, but it's mixed up. I'm sorry. Yes, you do have one more agenda item.
The other client has been here.
Patiently.
Patiently. But at some point, it might come in ahead of this, but...
That was my fault. You should have done the, the wave. I apologize.
I'm here with Jerry Conley, who is purchasing the property at...
That's right. Yes. Just note for the record, Cheryl's recused.
So I'm here with Jerry Conley, who's purchasing the property at 475 Adams Street. It's the old red house that is across from the Blue Hills Bank. And it's sort of an interesting piece of property. It is property with a history of pre-existing nonconformity. It was historically doctor's offices with residents and operated as such under special permits that were continued for periods of time. That use has lapsed. About a year ago, the current owner, who's Tom O'Neil, sought a permit to put a real estate office and, and some other small offices in the building, started a hearing with the Board of Appeals and withdrew the application. He is now sold or selling to the Conleys, and the Conleys are proposing a new use. And I've shown you a, provided a, a rendering of what that new use would be. It would be two, a, a building that would have two small offices on the first floor, two, two-bedroom apartments on the second floor. It requires at a minimum a special permit, a new special permit from the Board of Appeals, and it would require a site plan approval from this board. It may require variances. We have not yet submitted a specific application to the zoning commissioner with respect to that. But we have conducted two neighbor meetings, the most recent one being last evening, to talk about this proposed use in a, in a draft of a site plan that would, that would sort of set the building against the street, use the existing driveway in and out, and provides parking, at least under the zoning for the combination of uses today, of 12 parking spaces. We think perhaps a fewer number might be allowable, and we have to look carefully at There is still some angst about doing anything other than a single-family lot here at a minimum. We know that we can cut the lot in half because it is more than 15,000 square feet, has more than 150 feet of frontage, so we can create two conforming lots and put buildings on in a sort of a odd way. Two driveways and impact to traffic would be potentially significant with respect to that. We could do other uses allowed under state zoning law, such as daycare, preschool. And we know that there is significant interest for preschool and daycare at this location, but that's a pretty intensive use from a traffic and use perspective, so we're not proposing to do that. We're not proposing to put two single-family dwellings here. We're not proposing at the moment to think about a more dense residential use, which could go here. What we're really thinking about is how this property fits that sort of street front, which has a church. This property, the Jubenville Building, which is a law office, and this can be seen in this rendering, sort of to the left. In fact, it was carefully, preliminary designs sort of fair, carefully mirrors that and gives it that same appearance. And then the post office. And across the street, the Blue Hills Bank. And a fairly wide, three-lane, four-lane of traffic, which really prohibits sort of pedestrian crossing or other crossings for purposes of just moving back and forth. It's a low-traffic generator. We're proposing to limit the type of office use to uses where, such as law offices, accounting offices, real estate offices, where the predominant level of effort is individuals working in the office but meeting clients elsewhere. Not a doctor's office, not a chiropractor office, not a rehab facility, where the predominant use is the client coming to the site and churning traffic through the day. So that's the proposal. We wanted to have a preliminary presentation, any, for initial gut reactions to whether what's good, bad, or indifferent. We know that we do need to be before both boards. We're going to the historical commission on the 9th because it is also historical. We have for two, two reasons that night, but I'll be with the historical commission at 7:00, talking about the building. It is... It is much older than 1919. It does have some historic significance, but it's really in tough shape and not likely to be saved. Jerry's already filed a demolition permit, and to trigger that process with the historical commission. So given that, we're open to any thought, initial thoughts and questions and concerns as we, as we get into sort of the final throes of initial planning, as we begin to prepare plans for...
Questions from board members?
Well, it would certainly shield the neighborhood from the Blue Hill Bank.
It would. Can you talk about... What's interesting about the site is that this doesn't show topography, but it actually comes up towards the back. It's about a two- or three-foot change in grade.
Right.
So you can sit this down a little bit and really berm up the rear, proposing a six-foot wood stockade fence. In fact, we're getting into some direct discussions with the neighbors. There's a two-family immediately behind, so the discussion with them about what's the best way, you know, to cite this, do we move this a little bit this way, tighten the parking up in here? The birmingham and the plantings and the fencing, are they adequate to do what's, what's necessary? But that's obviously a direct issue, and the Conleys and, and those neighbors are meeting to discuss what's the best way to treat this piece of the property. But I think it, from the town's perspective, generates a little bit of new commercial tax revenue. It's, it is low-impact, and so I think it's a net gain to the neighborhood and the, and the town with the approach that we're taking.
I, I do like the emphasis on integrating it in with the rest of the neighborhood, the same type, same style of building in many ways, the same colors, the same roof treatments, bringing it forward so it's addressing the street rather than setting it back on the lot. I do appreciate those. Other comments from board members?
Well, the, the public, of course, if you can get the neighbors on board...
Yeah.
I think you can get the planning board on board.
Yeah. And to the point of the width of the street, I mean, that particular area, as you know, is very highly trafficked. It's hard to imagine a family in, in that with the kids coming out in that particular area, and you do have those other uses, commercial uses on either side, so...
Yeah, and if you're putting single-family houses, you're inviting families with kids if you have...
I don't have a problem with families with kids, but you know, that street is an issue for them.
That's right. But the churn, and the, you've got two, and one of the interesting things is that the island that feeds the, the overpass, Wood Street coming across, is approximately here.
Yeah.
You can make the left and cross comfortably into this driveway, do it fairly frequently. If, if, if there's a driveway here, now they have to make a right, and they're going to turn into St. Agatha Road, or they're going to turn into the church, or they're going to go down and around and come back in.
Right.
It creates traffic that ought not to be there.
Right. And that, that island can already be fairly tricky, so having met some people going the wrong way past the island, just as you're trying to turn and not expecting somebody to be there. Anything else from board members? All right, well, in that case, we look forward to coming back, and thank you, and thank you for your patience. Appreciate it, so. So we have two zoning items on the agenda. I'm guessing there's not a whole heck of a lot of appetite for zoning items at the moment.
I think that, you know, we've discussed them, haven't we? I mean, the, the, Ned was the one who asked for the, the use thing, and if he's happy with not pursuing it, why should we care?
Well, I'm not saying we're not pursuing it, I'm just saying we're not necessarily pursuing it tonight.
Okay, I mean, but why should, why should we pursue it at town meeting?
Well, I think it's, it's still on our list. We had a question...
We did recommend that the town meeting pass it, and we wouldn't have to, presumably to keep you from going up and, and justifying it, rescind our vote, or change our vote, revise our vote.
Change our vote. Revise our vote to accept the town meeting's recommendation, which we will discuss on Monday. But my point was not to talk about it for Monday, my point was to talk about it for submission in January. Because if you remember, one of the, one of the many questions that came up as we were addressing non-conforming buildings, Marion brought up the issue of non-conforming lots. The building inspector apparently brought up another issue, and so the question is, if we're getting it ready for January, how do we want to deal with it? It wasn't meant to talk about it for Monday night, so.
I'm...
But we do need to have that on the agenda to do this.
I have no idea what Marion is getting at.
So this is why I need to pull in the notes that she sent me and get it to everybody, and I am suggesting that I would look for a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
I motion.
Gosh, that's a non-debatable motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.